I've just been to the topic. Well, the thing is. No, hardly any. In fact, the same two people I saw last time. Yes, and one other chap who his name I don't know. But other interesting, useful chap to the network rail. He's very good for the project manager. But there's hardly anything like Bradly Stoke and that next to nothing. But there were just two, two kind of, nothing new, nothing to see, nothing nice, nothing special.
Order, order.
Um, okay. Right, I would like to go through your agenda and welcome everybody. Members are reminded that councillors generally consider the following matters in this type of area of countries. Equal opportunity, race gender, sexual organization, that powerful status, age and any disability. Line disorder on what safety rules. Okay, welcome to, uh, from Bransley and, uh, we're working out here to like to access some information. Councillor on Brian Hopkins, Chair of Planning and we've got members of the, uh, so, uh, part of the, uh, council. Sitting here which members of planning. And on my left, um, the chairman of the town. Clark, okay. So, right, emergency evacuation procedure. In the event of an fire or other emergency, signal for the continuous standing of guard. And I don't believe there's any tests or anything to my memory here, one, it's a genuine one. Please exit from the room by the exit doors, okay, three ways exit doors here. And, uh, a summit meeting point in the car, in the car parking area to around the building and, uh, outside. And if they have any calls in the boardroom, we can go and, uh. Right, formally recording our meeting. In line with the openness of local bodies regulation in two thousand and fourteen. This meeting may, will come reported by the town council members or members of the public. Um, submissions from the public, um, I've got fifteen minutes scheduled for that. Um, so the meeting may be formally during the consultation, should we do now. So residents of Bradley Stowe wishing to make a statement or ask a question, ask a confirm that they live in Bradley Stowe. Before making a statement or asking their question. Uh, a maximum of five minutes per person is allowed within the o'clock limit of fifteen minutes. There will be no opportunity later in the meeting for the public to speak. So, have you got any submissions from the public? No? Okay, so.
Actually, sorry, I'm not put from, uh, Bradley Stowe.
Do you mean that? Sorry, you carry on.
Um, I know the, the planning didn't go our way, but I'd say thank those people that helped us with the planning. And the town council here, uh, for our appeal against McDonald's etcetera. Your help there. It's all really, didn't go very well for us, obviously.
Was it, was it done deal from the beginning though, wasn't it really?
It fell away, yeah.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah. Is there anything else you, you want to say on that or to, to speak you back in?
No, not with, I'm mainly more here to, um, I'm not going to put them through.
Thanks, okay. I think, I think all of us feel the same way, but I'm sure a few people that are complaining about it will be actually using it to get their approval thing or whatever.
I just thought, um, my appreciation.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Chair, it is a very disappointing outcome. Uh, as you know, you were there, I was there, and, you know, we all feel the same way. What I would say is that, um, don't give up. There is still, you know, a license application which will have to come in from. I would suggest that if you feel that strongly, lobby the Chair of the Regulatory and Licensing Committee and all the members. Because this will at some stage have to perhaps come back before South Gloss for a license application. Um, also, I, I found it quite amazing that one of the members who was at that planning meeting. When I read out the message that had come out in the press that day. Which had been written by the Shadow Culture Minister urging that, uh, people on committees did not give the go ahead. To what would fuel the obesity crisis in this country. And here we are now seeing the same councillor going off on one about the takeaways that are predominantly wanted. To be set up in Staple Hill and Darnett. Is that right, Brian?
I don't know.
You were there.
I don't know about the, yeah, very sure, yeah.
Well, one of the members, you know, he was there and I urged him and actually said, you know, you might find this interesting. As your that Shadow Culture Minister has written this today in the press, I would urge you to heed his warning at this committee. And obviously the committee turned it down, which was good, which is what the residents wanted, which was what we wanted. But it's very disheartening that the planning inspector have seen, you know, to overturn it and I just hope that.
Also without conditions.
Sorry?
No conditions whatsoever.
Well, no, I mean, I, I just find it amazing, you know, it's almost as if he didn't even read the papers.
Exactly, yeah. Sheen.
Whoever, you know.
I will share something with the public, um, which I don't believe Keith knows either. Um, which, uh, I discussed in the Roger evening earlier in the week. And Roger, as you may well know, um, spent a lot of time talking to officers in the background of South Gloucestershire. Um, I mean, he impressed all of us, to be quite frank, with the, with the work they actually put, put in. And, um, what he said is that, uh, effectively South Gloucestershire did not defend the case. Um, they actually went to a third party, uh, which they employed.
For three thousand pounds.
And basically followed themselves to tell South Gloucestershire, literally, uh, that they should not have turned it down. They didn't actually really put the case forward, all the things, all those residents that are gonna have their road, which, um, is behind their houses. Moved right adjacent to their houses, the safety factor of that road. None of that was mentioned, there were so many issues in relationship to it, um. It's really bad and, uh, and I know that, uh, the officers, uh, spoke to, uh, Roger Hemington spoke to Sarah. Um, pondered on this and, uh, you know, he said that, um, I'm sorry you all thought you hadn't even got, uh. Um, a sort of tie on the, uh, on the, on the timings, uh, on it. And, and I thought, well, this is unbelievable, because Roger, um, wanted the application to go ahead, he put nothing on there condition wise. And, um, everything was argued and, you know, and this is absolutely crazy. So you're right, Keith, it's gotta go through, uh, licensing, food licensing, hours of opening and all that. So planning commission can be granted, uh, with no, um, restrictions. Because Tesco's actually operates on a twenty-four hour basis anyway. Um, so that's why he's done that, but the reality is that the licensing is another matter, so we may see another appeal coming up.
Chair, I said, all right. The, the other thing I was gonna say was, um, y- you know, and so I said at that meeting. Bradley Stoke lacked a district centre for a long, long time here, desperately needed. And yes, twenty-eight, twenty-nine years down the line, we ended up with one. But it's not what was asked for by the residents. Good retail shops, not a glorified food court, and that's what you've got over there. And now they wanna build on the rest of the car park and have more takeaways, food courts, you know, I mean. It's not what the public wanted, it's not what I wanted. And, you know, I mean, I'm just glad that our planning process now in South Gloss is agreed overall, you know. So, you know, that's the next thing. South Gloss councillors are hopefully going to revisit the whole of that change that has taken place on those planning, new, new planning processes. I've never been in favour of it from the start and I certainly, you know, am not gonna say.
I sh- I shared a conversation at the original planning application with, uh, of a meeting I had with a senior planning officer. Many years ago, um, in Bradley Stowe, when we were looking at that for Willie Brook and the commission, and we're going to now. And she had said to me, and I was told off by, obviously later, I should never have mentioned it. And I should mention it again tonight, so.
Well, what were we counting for?
Basically, 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 the conversation that went along was, oh.
Planning.
Because I was very interested in planning when I was younger, I did a lot of tank planning and everything. And I said to her, why has this been, you know, allowed in this particular way? She said, it should never have happened. Because what you should do with planning, you should build a town around the shopping centre. You shouldn't actually put the shopping centre right adjacent houses and things. And what you do is you build up lots of properties, so you have tall rise, you know, high rise of properties. Coming in, flats apartments and things, take a look down on things, fine. And we've got good barrier walls to the ground floors that, you know, are then sort of well, uh, protected. Here, we've got a row of houses which are flash illuminated by blue neon signs all night etcetera. And it's disgusting, it really is. But I mentioned that and I shouldn't have done it, because she's now planning inspector, it's a shame she wasn't called in on this one, because I know if she had been. Um, perhaps she would have been because there was a, a closeness there, but, uh, she's now planning inspector and she's moved off.
Well, I think the other interesting thing, Chair, is that this committee, when they came back, even though it was in for appeal. They applied to have their signage, illuminated signs. How could they ask for that signage on something that even had many provisions on it?
I think we all questioned that.
Yeah, well, we turned it down here, so, I mean, this town council has stuck up for its residents and we intend to carry on doing that, I certainly do anyway.
It should, should have been, also, it should have been, um, a meeting originally where effectively councillor people would be known to sort of have this safe. But they did it in a written one.
Yeah.
And normally that would have been finished by something like October. And Sharon here had been writing and writing, writing to try and actually find out what's happened. Uh, so, I mean, we're all very saddened by this, it's not good. Um, as I said, there's a lot of people probably, you know, would have supported not having it, but I think will probably use it. I should be laughing, but I think they'll probably do, do that. Um, and, um, you know, it was there.
I hope it's not a federal waste, Chair.
I think a lot of people are unaware as well, especially from press reports, that as residents, okay, we may or may not want it. But actually our main point was that we didn't want it near our houses and I don't think that comes across in press reports at all, there's a Bristol Evening Post report.
That was never our issue about what type of unit.
And it, it seems every time a report comes out, whether it's Bradley Stoke Journal, you know. We, we feel antagonized because then we get the boy racers in the car park that night, revving their engines, beeping their horns late at night. Um, yeah. And I, and I think the press reports don't actually reflect correctly. It wasn't, okay, it may or may not be about McDonald's, I don't wanna say McDonald's in Bradley Stoke personally. But it was up, the whole point was, you know, we don't want it near our houses and you can call us snowflakes or nimby's, but.
We've already got a big test news.
I tell you, anybody saying that also wouldn't want to live right by it, so, yeah. And we know the problems that comes with the area.
It's a quiet end of the car park, that would be a lively part of the entire site at twenty-four seven, all night long.
Well, I wrote to the committee and said, you know, consider if it was your family, you know. These people bought these houses in good faith, thinking that they'd be able to bring their children up with a healthy lifestyle and everything else. It's not gonna be like that, and, you know, I said, think of it like that, that, you know, you've got to make that decision, just think of it if it was your family.
Well, the health, it's just on the food, it's all about the CO2 emissions, right in our back gardens where our children play.
Well, I ran the green deal, I ran the green deal, um, and they didn't do a thing, nothing.
Well, like I said, it's in the name, drive-through, that means cars.
Yeah, exactly, it's the concept of our business.
Exactly, you can't get served if you walk up, you can't get served, so how is that, you know, trying to reduce.
Is that bringing footfall to the centre?
Yeah.
Let's hope it's not diesel lorries delivering McDonald's, uh, raw materials, eh?
So it's all, it's all about money, money.
New case, she actually attended all the planning applications.
Yeah.
Talking about the light, that is currently still waiting for approval, which obviously be rubber stamped. Um, I, we have a lot of issues with the lighting, we've got, the signs are pointing towards the housing. I don't know whether you guys have got an opportunity to again object, but for us it seems like it's, um.
We don't need to know McDonald's, is that?
We don't need to know, they don't need to advertise to us, so what's the purpose of the direction of the signage towards the housing, I don't get that. So I don't really, you guys.
To be honest, I don't think the powers that be, I don't think makes the slightest bit of difference.
No, I don't think they care.
It's all about money.
We've been to the MP, we've been to Jack de Presty, we've been to the, um, the Labour candidate as well, she spoke to us. They did all they could and obviously individuals behind closed doors did deals and we know it.
Yeah, we even got support.
But Chair, I, I think it should be noted though, this, this council here, no politics, everybody here was against it.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we had, you know, Pat in top of that, the Liberal, um.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
They did, did try and get in saying, well, we, we objected to it. But the reality was, we actually had them down here, bless, bless, uh, the whole case, they actually came down here, we had them, they, they should have.
They did.
Yeah. That's why they changed it, didn't they?
Reason why it should happen.
I did remind Pat that she was in power for all those years, the Liberals, here in Bradley Stoke. And they campaigned for good quality retail district centre. This is not a good quality shop, this is.
I don't know what the future looks like.
I mean, to be honest with you, I've already taken my, taken my wing in the centre, so.
Yeah, yeah, Chair, as, right now, as this, this issue has been made. I just want to actually, uh, also thank all the councillors who put their efforts, especially councillor Roger Evinin and all the other councillors. As well as our clerk for putting in good support, putting our objection resonating what residents said. And we will continue our support of the residents as we go along, because all in our parts, either licensing, waterway maybe. Uh, we will be, be offering your support and will continue to do that, okay.
And which councillor has, uh, vac- vacancy, what's that for currently, is not?
Uh, that is, that's actually one of our councillors came down because of the.
Okay, that's not Roger, is it?
No, no, Roger is still here, he's a.
Okay.
Are you putting your name forward while you chat?
Yeah, if, if.
I know somebody might.
But if there is no election, we will call from people that we already mentioned.
Yeah. Yeah.
We would like to actually see people who are community arraigned so that we can actually call, respect to your politics, because that's simply how we like to work.
I think we're all checked.
If you don't know the about it, speak to Sharon, which I'm gonna actually help you.
Okay. Well, we're all they favor planning rules and laws now, so, all experts, you know. Two years of this.
You don't get paid as a councillor, do you?
No, 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 well, not only we, the last two years we have been paid, we've spent a lot of time on it.
Thanks for your, thanks for your.
And then you get a screw noise voice, Stephen Ward.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, be in the media tomorrow.
They wouldn't have finished on the, on the.
Quite, quite regretted it.
They did, they did.
They'll be.
Just got to find a name first.
We have got YTL here tonight and, and they're obviously listening to this and they probably looked at, um, and, and at the moment they're being held in very highly esteem.
Yeah.
In, uh, in planning circles, um, for designing the new town, which is going in, uh, with, understand, infrastructure happening before, uh, development. And looking to develop something which is really good, so I think a lot of people are gonna be, uh, quite jealous.
Hopefully not McDonald's.
Probably gonna be signing up to buy a new house over there, so hopefully we'll move on to that in a minute.
What's the prices?
Um, I'm gonna leave them up on the schedule, in fact, we're, we're down there, so I'm gonna move on to that. After the minute, after the minute. Do I vote on that piece? Well, it's moved, um, right, and we, we could be here all night actually talking about, um, Willie Brook, no.
Thanks.
Right, uh, do we see any, uh, apologies for absence, I, yeah. No?
No.
Okay. Announcement by the Chair. I'm happy you're here, everyone.
Mm.
Oh, decoration, always forget that one, decoration for members, yeah, decoration for members, do any members got any decorations in the Local Government Act they wish to, uh, advise us of now?
Usually.
What, they're all on?
Loyalty.
Loyalty, yeah, he's not admitted it. Right.
Nothing to hide.
Okay, well, while you're in there anyway, someone's planning committee in South Gloss, already splitting. Anybody else?
I've got an announcement, I've got one, decorations, I've got one.
Okay, now.
Um, it came in today and it's, um. Holy, South Gloss online consultation, Holy Trinity School, the school keep clear for the Bradley Stoke. So it is proposed to install some new signs on the single post back to back and promote the traffic regulation order to make the lining enforceable. Because at the moment, the, um, yellow zigzag lines at Holy Trinity Primary School aren't enforceable. Because there is no traffic regulation order linked to that.
Okay.
They're, they're reviewing quite a few zigzag lines, I think across the whole of South Gloss.
That's.
I saw it, you were, wasn't it?
Yes, and they are asking to comment, but it's just a fact it came in today and the consultation opened was on the twenty-eighth of January, Bradley Stoke on the eighteenth of February, so. When it comes, when the space available.
So, Chair.
I, I wanna, I wanna make one thing, uh, Bradley Stoke has actually put their preset, preset up, which is the tax which, um. We take from people locally in our, as our residents, we just try and keep that as low as possible and do better things and manage, manage, manage our assets in, in the right manner. So people can enjoy them and they're kept in good condition etcetera. And we've actually put it up by one percent. Um, and as a way of actually showing what's actually happening locally, Filton has just announced and they're the, literally the highest, well, they were the highest preset. In South Gloucestershire anyway, and it appears they are now the highest preset of any, um, small town or, um, parish council in the country.
Who controls that?
They've put it up by thirty-five percent. Which is not inconsiderable, considering that a D rated house is now actually three hundred, I think it's in fifteen pounds per year. And that's against Bradley Stoke, which is currently.
Hundred and fifteen, so.
Fifteen thirty-eight, so.
Hundred and fifteen thirty-eight, it all are facilities.
So I was just hundred and fifteen, that's three entered, so any chance of actually arguing?
And, and Patchway, unfortunately, although they've got Charlton Hayes, which is pumping huge amounts of money into it. And they can't sp- actually can't spend any money there until ten years after the last phase of the budget. It's something like quarter million pound a year from, um, uh, Charlton Hayes, which equates nearly fifty percent of the budget. They've just put it up by seventeen percent, seventeen percent.
That's true, Chair.
The, the numbers have got the leaflet from the Conservatives, yeah, with all the numbers.
Last years ago, um, but they just, they just put it up by seventeen, I think it's seventeen point one percent, I was there last night.
You were there, right?
I argued against it, uh, I gave a good reason for not doing it and an alternative budget which would have balanced. Um, but unfortunately we were drowned out and, uh, it's now gone up by seventeen point one percent.
I notice the poor attendance of councillors as well, Chair. Not very good, is it?
It's interesting, because the thing is, Patchway's got something like five committees and quite a few of the councillors are actually on the committees. However, that was not actually shown in the, um, the, the, the actual thing that, I'm, I'm actually, we've got committees and we've got subcommittees. We've got personnel, I've got the Chair of Personnel, I've been running around in circles and had emergency meetings literally twice a week since I started. And the last emergency meeting which we had, which was for, for council, remembering that effectively so we're going to all council meetings. But in reality, they, they put it out, so that's what we've done, but there's a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings could be had, more than in this, in this, in Bradley Stowe.
Chair.
Can we, can we come back to that?
Yeah, before we go on, I'll tell you about Sharon's comments. Now, these, uh, lines, the consultation, am I right in saying that they're consulting on something in retrospect that the lines are already in?
Yeah, but there's no traffic regulation order on them.
Yeah, but, I mean, any other time, they say with the public, you know, when they want lines down and they say, oh, I got a tinny yellow paint, I can come and do it for you if you want. You know, here, they put lines down, somebody gave them permission to do it, they didn't consult. I find this absolutely amazing. Any other time, you can have lines down before they carry out a consultation. How did this one get through? What a waste of money. Who gave that one?
How much money for the consultation, the idea?
No idea.
It's the wrong way about, you consult first and then you put the lines down.
Even if they say you don't do it, it's still.
But in principle, we agree, we can do that with that, so that's.
Well, I'm sure the journal will run with that one.
Good for the minutes of the meeting, eight minutes of the consultation. Okay, hands on that piece, okay, that's all finished. If you work here, you, you can explain. Any extensions? Any against? Okay. Okay.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Hannah from YTL Arena, some of you I think we've already met, some of you have already been to the Hangars, hello, nice to see you again. Hello to the public as well, I'm representing YTL Arena tonight and this is my colleague Russell Naughton, who's also here, represents the arena. Um, just to clarify, we are part of YTL, but we're not responsible for the development on the airfield. We work in the same office, we're all part of the same company, but we're here tonight just to talk about the arena. Very happy to try and answer questions about the development, but it's not really our, our remit, so while we're aware, we won't have detailed information about that. But I'll attend if you have any questions to, to answer them, we'll take them back and, and get answers for this in future. So just to clarify, we have put in a planning application, it's gone to Crystal City Council and also South Gloucestershire Council. Because we're stepping over two boundaries and our meeting hours we don't have. But just for, um, anyone who doesn't know who we are, YTL is a Malaysian family business founded after the Second World War. Story goes that father and son during the war, when the British were requisitioning anything that moved, with the vehicle and the engine. They hid their truck in the jungle. And after the war, when Malaysia was rebuilding its country, it was obviously rebuilding, uh, people desperately needed family, in need of family homes. And, uh, the government offered money to put people to build new homes. And, uh, YTL father and son, YTL stands for the father, Yo Chong Lei. Uh, they went to the government and said, yeah, we'll take your money, we'll build social housing. Uh, but can we have a strip of land and we'll build privately as well to help build our business? But in doing so, we'll make your social housing bigger and better. And the government thought that was a great deal and they did it and that's how they founded their business. And in fact, in order to get the funding to be able to grow their business, uh, the wife sold all pawn to her jewellery. So it's an absolute no money start from the beginning. Um, seventy years later, they own three billion pounds worth of assets in Britain alone. Uh, they're a multi-national company with multi-skills, cement, engineering, construction, property development, education, telecommunications, transport. They've done a. Cement, engineering, construction, property development, education, telecommunications, transport in, they've done a super, um, fast speed railway line in, in Malaysia linking Kuala Lumpur to the airport. Um, and they own in Britain Wessex Water, which in this area, you probably get your water from Bristol Water, when you flush your loo or take the, the rubbish down the drain, that's Wessex Water clearing all the rubbish.
No, no, no.
So you.
Wessex Water.
Um, and that goes to Avon Mount, but the, the water you drink is probably Bristol Water if you live in this area.
Yeah.
The Wessex Water covers the whole of the south west apart from Bristol itself and, and surrounding area. It goes right down to the south coast to Dorset to Bournemouth, across to Salisbury, background up to this part of the world, down to Avon Mount, Western Supermere, and it just about hits the Devon, the Somerset Devon border, so it's a huge area that it covers in and serves more than two and a half million customers. They also own the Gayseford Bath Spa, which is a hotel and bath, which is a five star hotel, and Thermay Bath Spa, which is the hot water sitting bath, if anyone's aware of them.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why baths are called baths and it has hot water and they, they operate Thermay Bath Spa as well. They also have hotels in London and Edinburgh. They're long term investors, they're entrepreneurs, they see an opportunity, they grab it, they run with it, they continue investing whatever they've seen and built, and they have never sold a business. They absolutely are dedicated to seeing things through and, and delivering. And, and they consider themselves community builders, they're, they're really keen on that. Um, I've worked with them, I worked when Thermay Bath Spa hadn't even opened and it was hugely controversial and I've worked with them through and I've seen, um, how they very much try and, uh, buy into whatever is the local story or the local community and they're really, they're really keen on doing that. So they're long term investors and, uh, and have invested in this area and the, uh, culture. So, Filton Airfield, we, I think probably most of you are familiar living in this part of the world, that Filton Airfield, it closed in two thousand and twelve. They bought it, they were looking for a hotel, uh, to develop in Bristol and, um, driving around couldn't find anything and, and the person who was showing them what they had on offer in Bristol just mentioned the airport and they drove down the runway and said, let's buy it. So, uh, they instructed the chairman of Wessex Water in, in Britain, buy it, don't pay too much, so that's what we did. And he bought, so he bought the air, they bought the airfield absolutely with a view to develop it. Um, and then about a year later, they bought the Bravison Hangars, which are these three hangars here. This is an old picture, um, it's taken probably in about nineteen fifties. So, Filton is, is steeped in history, it's the original terminus for the Bristol tramway. Um, it became one of the world's largest aircraft manufacturing sites, um, and even today, we've still got GKN, Rolls-Royce Airbus on that site, the engineering expertise on that area. Bravison, the hangars, were named after the, the man who decided to build the Bravison, um, aircraft. It was seen after the Second World War in Britain as being a way of harnessing all that engineering technology expertise which should be used for warfare and we were looking at, Britain was looking at a way of harnessing all of that and creating a domestic industry that would really employ the locals with, and give a boost to, to the southwest. So they created this, this huge aircraft, it was like a la- a cruise liner in the sky, had a cocktail bar, cinema, for a hundred people, it was massive. Um, and, and very luxurious, it's for that early jet set type thing. They pioneered, um, technologies in order to create it, but just as it was really at a stage where it was going to take off and become a commercial success, they invented the supersonic or, or the jet engine, which then became the supersonic jet, jet engine and, and Concorde. So, um, it never really took off as a commercial success, but it absolutely led the way to what happened next. This is a picture of the Bravison inside the Bravison Hangars. You can see all this amazing steel structure, it was, it was designed by an engi- an aviation engineer, not an architect. Um, and in fact, we've met his children, he's no longer alive, but we've met his children, um, and they said that their dad described it as the shed. So he used to go to work in the shed and, and this is the shed he used to go and work in. But they are huge and that's what we're proposing to develop. Actually, on the airfield, this is the bit I can't tell you much about, but actually on the airfield, uh, they're creating a new neighbourhood. Uh, they're going to call it Bravison after the aircraft. There will be a new transport hub, there will be a metro bus route coming straight through and then cutting up towards the schools, we're linking to Bristol City Centre. Three new schools, a senior school, a secondary school and, and two primary schools, um, a ten acre park, a new workspace and two thousand seven hundred and sixty five homes. Uh, they recently had a, a little ceremony, see, um, councillor Sam Tipton, um, they used, they recently, last week, week four, had a, a breaking ground ceremony and that's where they've just started working on the very first phase of houses which they've got planning permission for and that will be, the first phase is two hundred and seventy houses. There is, I know you were all talking about creating communities and infrastructure, um, there is, uh, an agreement called the CPNN, which is the Cribs Patchway New Neighbourhood. And it's a, an agreement between all the developers in the area, um, one of which is, is YTL. And they have between them committed these funds that's, um, uh, a total of a, a very large amount of money. Um, and that's also being, um, matched, not quite matched with, like, South Gloucestershire money, um, to make sure that all the infrastructure is in place before any of these big projects have go ahead. So, obviously, there's the metro bus extension, there's a halt to the A thirty eight corridor improvements. Um, you'll be aware, I'm sure, of the Gypsy Patch Lane work, but, uh, has it started or is it imminent?
Oh, yes.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
It's not our fault, but it was beneficial. Um, and it's a community centre, all sorts of different, um, cycling and walking routes, so there's a whole load of infrastructure.
God, the least of my worries.
What is that, what is that, taking West Bravestock wing, what are you doing for that?
Two point three.
Two point three, what other, what other things are you doing?
As I said, I'm not, I don't know about this, I just know what, what type of game I'm playing.
Was one more lane order, two lanes.
I don't know, I, I imagine it's something enhancing to, to make sure things flow, but I'm afraid I don't know, I don't know. I can find out if you'd like me to, I, I don't know.
Yeah, we'd like to know if it's going to affect.
This end, yes, of course, of course.
This end.
There's this stuff that's already been done as well. This has been allocated, so it will be done, I think, is that right, do you know?
Yeah, so, so it's all been agreed, the whole message has been going on.
No, it's all, where the sum of it was already been done because. Yes, it might work, but I.
We, we can get a breakdown of South Gloucestershire.
When, uh, when YTL first came on the scene, they came to the Stovegiver and I asked a guy there a question. Uh, in Malaysia, YTL are very big in transport.
Yes.
And wouldn't it be a good idea if you were to get in quick and take on the metro bus? I'll repeat that, metro bus. It would be good if YTL was to take it over. Perhaps we might have a good bus service.
Yeah.
I'll leave it like that.
I'll, I'll pass it back. Um, I will just say that there's a huge amount they're already committed to, it's a bit something else on top would be a, a big demand, but
If you could. Yeah, I know that, yeah.
Do you know, I, I wouldn't put it past them doing anything, you know, they, they're absolutely, they see opportunities and they, if it's going to improve what they're doing, they, I'm sure they'll,
No.
they'll want to be involved in some way, but I, the metro system is out of our reach at the moment, it's very urgent.
Oh, I know. I mean, you're all grateful for what you're doing there, I mean, you know, the money wouldn't be there any other way.
No.
But, you know, the fact is, you are big in, uh, transport and my immediate thoughts were, if we're ever gonna get a decent bus service or train service in this area, YTL should play their mark, get in there now.
Well, as I, as I said, I'm very happy to pass that back up, um, I don't have the ear of, uh, of the man who owns the company, so he's called Hong, he's the son of, of Yo Tion Le.
No. Yeah.
But, um, I will very happily pass it up through the channels and, and suggest it, who knows?
Yes, you could.
Uh, as I say, we don't have any control over that and they have already, you know, got quite a lot of work to do on the airfield, uh, and the hangars, so maybe not.
I'm sure we're very grateful for what First Mass, uh, First Mass does, but, yeah, you know, I would like to see YTL.
It's always good to see decent infrastructure.
Can I just talk about the businesses that are going to be on there?
On the airfield? At the moment, um, they've got sixty two acres of land at the A thirty eight end,
Well, no.
but I, I don't think they've got anyone brought in at the moment, I don't think they're at that stage yet. They've literally got planning permission for two hundred and seven. They've got outline planning permission for the entire runways, three hundred and twenty acres, but they've got, um, detailed planning permission just for the two hundred and seventeen houses which they're building. And they will gradually let that evolve and grow as a community. So when those new, that sixty two acres actually comes online and, and we have businesses, I don't know. But I know that they're very keen on having quality, you know, hopefully enhancing whatever, you know, Airbus and, and GKN are doing, that sort of, you know, tech and, um, uh, engineering and, and that sort of type of work, but at this stage, they have got all the time in.
Because it's gonna, oh, so I've read, it's, it's gonna be a self-contained, um, environment, i.e. that the people live there, socialise there, work there.
Well, I think some will, I don't think they can dictate who does what where, you know, I think they light up it, I think they like to make it so they're willing.
No, 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 obviously, no, no, there is a policy.
Yes, they could, you live in one place and cycle up to the, I think that's what they aspire to doing, uh, to very much encourage people to live that live work quality of life. But, uh, yeah, but, um, at the moment, we don't really, don't know what, what this is.
No, it sounds a lot more like that. Yeah, but I was just, you know, thinking about the plans ahead, that there will be businesses, there will be people that could, that could work, the people who've got the houses now.
Yes.
Geez, they're doing that self-contained.
Could work, though, yes.
Yeah, I think it's self-contained. Then, we'll be able to work in businesses.
The, so the surrounding area, yes, yes, absolutely, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
They wanna minimise car.
And as a whole, I know, I know it's sixty two, but, but how, what that would be like at this stage, I, I don't think they know. They're very much in a state of discussing, having conversations with, with some people who'd like to attract us, yeah. So, um, we all know about transport, it's really, connectivity's really important. So, this is the new runway neighbourhood called Bravison. Connected by the M four, the M five, the M thirty two, north, south, east, west. We've got obviously going in route to Wales and the Seven Bridge. You've got the A thirty eight and the A four O one eight, two train stations that Temple Meads and Parkway which are already in existence. Uh, the port, the airport, the universities, and there's already this sort of cluster of engineering, um, type businesses on the east side of the, of the runway. And to the west, there's this leisure destination which is beginning to come up, things like the Wave at the Spalding, um, you know, the, the Mall, uh, Wild Place. There's quite a lot of things already happening around this area. Um, so it's really important that we, we manage, manage the traffic. Um, and it's something that we've been working really hard on and when we've been talking to Bristol City Council and South Gloucestershire Council, we're really, you know, trying to make sure that everything that we do reduces car dependency. One of the, one of the great things about the fact that YTL owns the hangars, is going to do the work on transforming them and then has employed us to run it, so we work for YTL. It's not some big American conglomerate coming in and, and operating it. Will be embedded in the local community and it matters to us, on our reputation, we want to be good neighbours. Um, but we will also be able to therefore communicate with visitors and tell them about transport. And everything that we do, our transport strategy, communication will be encouraging people to get off your car or out of your car, get onto public transport, here's the train, here's the bus, this is the cycle route. And really encourage people to, to not use cars as poss- as much as possible. Of course, we know some people will, we'll never be able to stop everyone from doing that. People with access mobility issues, people who live in the middle of nowhere and there's no public transport, we know people will want to use their cars. Uh, but we will do everything we can to make it as easy as possible for people to use public transport. You wanted to say?
Yeah, you, I like the two stations just now, Parkway, Temple Meads, but, you know, in this area, we've got other stations, Abbey Wood, Patchway,
Yes. Absolutely, and I'm about to tell you our new one, yes, exactly. So, and we will have here a new train station
And you've also got a new one?
which will go on Henbury and back down into Temple Meads.
Philton Road?
Henbury.
Um, I don't think I've got a map of it, but there is obviously here, you've got Parkway.
Yeah.
But the Park, there's, there's a route, there's a railing track which runs from Parkway, obviously from the east of England, from Parkway into here and off round to Henbury. At the moment, there's a single line of about two miles. And, uh, Network Rail does not plan to make that for public use. We've got conversations going on to encourage them to do that, in community commitment of between five and ten million pounds to do signalling work
No, sure.
Mm, mm, sure.
to encourage that and of course, that then links right way out and in and it, it makes for much better service. And the service will have this Temple Meads up to, um, the arena and up to obviously the, the whole development here and then back down into the city centre. And then obviously it can come up round and, and come north as well. But, uh, it's something that, that we're, we're having those conversations already. So the Network Rail's committed to opening that train station in twenty twenty one and also the metro bus route is committed to be open at the end of twenty twenty one. So well before the arena is even built, that will be up and running and functioning and hopefully people from the surrounding area will start to, you know, to be able to use it. Um, there's going to be a sort of what, what our, our developers describe as a super highway of cycling and walking, going east west and then connected to all that so that people come in on cycle routes through the, the new neighbourhood, but also to access the arena. There will be, um, blue badge parking here, so people who, um, have accessibility, uh, needs will be able to get into the arena from here. But everyone else will come over the railway line, over the bridge, all our customers will come through the front, front door.
What about the other car parking?
Car parking will be here. Um, that's for seventeen hundred cars, um, which works out to about ten percent when we're operating it full capacity. It'll also be used for other things, for, you know, people who come to visit, you know, their employment area or maybe people who, who are commuting in and out from, from the train station into town. So there'll be all sorts of other noises as well. Um, and I've got a slide in a minute which shows you that we've also, um, had a conversation with other, um, uh, landowners, I suppose, who have got, already got car parks, so Uwi, um, Wild Place, Parkway, the Mall, where, when we have a busy, when we have a full capacity day, we would put in park and rides and shuttle buses so that we ease the, the need for cars coming into this area and keep them kept out in satellites around here, so keep them very much off the local streets. Um, so that's something that we, we've already had those conversations. Obviously, we can't sign any agreements until we've got planning permission and we're definitely going to be doing it, but those conversations are ongoing.
Sure.
Well, just ask a question, um, because my concern is the pollution.
Yeah?
With all the traffic that's gonna be coming in, people living there as well. There's a lot of asthma that's going on across all the motorways and cars and everything. There's been an increase of, uh, children getting asthma and that is one of my concerns. Don't worry, we've got McDonald's coming twenty four seven, we all have asthma, okay? My granddaughter's got it and she's very sensitive. Yeah, and my, my son is, but, you know, we're gonna have McDonald's behind us.
We've got the camera.
So, so you've got garden down the traffic and trying to make sure that the, the traffic remains just off the M five and the M four means that the whole of this area should see, well, we should be able to reduce it by quite a large amount. Obviously, there will be more people. But, um, it would make much more difference than saying people can come and have their A thirty eight to get to the city centre one. They'll just be, we'll be keeping the park and rides up here, keeping them off the streets and then just cleaning them in. We're already also having conversations about those shuttle buses, probably diesel, you know, biogas or, or clean, clean energy. So, those conversations are already also being, being. And we're, we're being required, I mean, all businesses being expected to, to try and be carbon neutral and we're absolutely driving down everything that we're using the sustainable, so as car, we won't be carless, it's just, you know, we're mitigating that.
Cars are the, cars are the, the, the transport better choice. What we can do, we can't control that, we're certainly in our own demise and our methodology of how we drive ticketing, you know, towards more sustainable methods. What we can do is try and influence that through our pricing policy, say, look, when you buy your ticket, how are you gonna get it? This is the best route we have. Yeah, well, our pricing policy for onsite parking will be substantial.
Yeah.
Our pricing policy for a shuttle bus or for park and ride will be much more attractive. And that's the only, we can influence that behaviour. Like, till it's a state more, more sustainable, transformed transport, which are not within our control, come on then, I'll, I'll get outside.
One of the things, as you own that land, okay, like I said earlier, I already put a park and ride space somewhere because it's a special block. That will be allocated at a potion for that, that'll be a great.
We're, we're sort of being told that park and ride encourages people on, so, so there's a, you know, obviously we want to try and keep them away from drive you to park and ride here. You're encouraging everyone to drive down here, park here. So what we want to do is say, don't drive, you know, just don't drive, you know, come some other way.
No, no, no.
There's a train station within a couple of hundred yards, there's cycle paths, there's walkways, there are buses, there's, you know, metro bus, we're trying to get people to think differently about how they, we, all we can do is influence, we can't demand them to do, you know, can't make them do it. But as soon as you put a car park here, everyone thinks, oh, I'll drive, you know, and we need to make it so it's the least attractive option or the best option.
For, for the people, I'm talking about the, when the, for the people coming outside, this is one of the corridors to get to Bravestock. So if we can allow that, because it's right now, if you're looking at the A thirty eight, it's chock a block, you know, so that's the reason why I mentioned that, but that's,
Yes, so that's fair, that's fair.
That's before even that, I mean, that was built, that was one of the reasons.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I suppose there might be the opportunity where the car park goes for people who want to commute into Bristol, just get in and out to Temple Meads and things, that they would be able to park in that car park and go in and out. And I, and I imagine we'll come up with a strategic strategy that if you're getting on the train to commute and not driving down the A thirty eight, it's a different pricing than if you're coming to the arena and you've just driven and you please a bus or car, so we'll, we'll have to look at all those pricing strategies and how we manage them.
And, and I also support your, your motion to actually put, connect it to the Parkway, so that'll be a good thing, so that'll be connecting.
Well, we, we just need as many people as possible to lobby Network Rail to, you know, dig deep and find a lobby of districts.
Or maybe a Bravestock.
Yeah, we can do that.
Use that station, very much to perform on frequency of rail service, yeah.
Still think it would.
Absolutely, and that's something else we're having conversations with now, because it's no point in being a train every three hours, it's useless to anyone, so absolutely, we need to make sure. And we need to make sure that, for example, if we had a Saturday night concert that finishes at half past ten, that there's a train leaving there at two to eleven.
Yeah, get my, my, my. Yeah, yeah.
So that, yeah, and a whole load of people then ordering Ubers and driving home, you need to make sure that that service works properly and those are all conversations that we're having. Well, one of our issues is, is, uh, and this sounds a bit like I'm, I'm sort of like ducking out, but, but is that until we've got planning permission, we can have the conversation, but we can't sit around the table and start signing agreements, because, you know, we, you know, we don't have any real, sort of like proper formality about it until we've actually, we're doing it. But those are conversations we're already having high level and, and, you know, very much, we feel really strongly that it would be great to have that, that train service, which is. that train service which is really regular. And once you've got people here working and you've got Horizon thirty eight on the other side of the road and you've got four thousand people working in Airbus every day, that train station should be, should be in demand. It should be for people who want to, once they've got the train station, we ought to be asking to plant their car and commute to, like, on a train.
Will you be monitoring that then? When it's all built up, would you be doing an ongoing monitoring to see?
We'll have a dynamic, yeah, we'll have a dynamic system. But we'll be talking to them before that even, because that will open two years before we start. So we'll, we'll be aware of what's going on there. We'll be talking to them the whole way through, trying to as much as we can. Yeah, we're not in control of Network Rail. We will absolutely, we're absolutely having those conversations.
Some of the new stations that have been built with great hopes in mind, places, the outskirts of Rover and Derby have actually proved to be white elephants.
Well, let's hope this happens. We can't, we can't do more than that. We just need to encourage people to get out of their cars. And, but there's also a conversation going on about this, this track then goes down to Henbury and there's something called, I'm sure, the Henbury Loop.
Yeah, Henbury Loop.
And we keep meeting people all saying, well, can't we open up the rest of it? And my understanding from a, a councillor from, um, Bristol is that a business case was done about twelve, fourteen years ago and it was seen that there wasn't a business case to do that. But I would argue that there's, in the next ten years, we're a huge business case to do that. Cause apart from, apart from whether or not we build a single house, there's an environment, you know, that needs to be protected. And so there's a huge business case to not get people in their cars.
I think the other big issue you've got is the port.
Yes, I think there is a blockage further down, yeah.
Because the port own that part of the railway. And Bristol Port has the capacity to have a deep port that put in. But they won't allow that part of the rail to be taken over. Now, I, I really do think.
Yeah, well, I think we just all need to start making a lot of noise though, I mean, trying to save them.
It's wrong, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, you're, everybody gets to work out the cars. Is to have cheap, sustainable transport.
Easy options, easy options, absolutely.
This site here, this site here is owned by you, Y T L, not me personally. Um, and, you know, Y T L, I think, as I said earlier, if they were to take over a franchise, it's of Ralph going in there and transport and provide cheap, sustainable transport. People won't go there by car, they'll have no necessity to. You can come there to a concert by train, go home by train or coach, you know, whatever. But it has to be sustainable and cheap.
Yeah. Well, that, that's, affordable and sustainable.
And, and also integration is always key. Because you, integration is key. Like you mentioned. If you're a concert at ten thirty or eleven o'clock, you need to have integration with that so that.
Absolutely. Well, that's the other reason why it would be good to have Parkway. That's what you, the other option is from here, you go into Temple Meads and they get to the train and train out. Cause if you just go straight through to Parkway at all, you don't need to go into Temple Meads and that then allows that, you know, people to come and use. You know, it, it to neighbours, that's all. As I say again, I'm sorry to keep saying, but we are having all these conversations and at this point, we can't, you know, we can't promise you anything. What we can promise you is that we'll continue trying and we will be really, you know, sort of like pushing to get the best of the issues that we have.
It's interesting how it works though. There's been like an Alfred Courtway's re-parking. There's lots of residential roads all around it. It's that if you don't manage that properly, it's just gonna have a huge impact to residents living outside of the immediate.
So the Mall, um, already does shuttle buses for events at Ashington Gate and it's worked really well for them. Um, I'm just.
I'm seeing it more so, I know it's, I know it's a huge, it's a large site. But once you've started opening up, there are people who walk across, et cetera. It's why the people will be, if your pricing for shuttle bus seems prohibitively expensive, why do we just didn't wanna do it? Interesting to see how people would use cars to go and park elsewhere, like an hour on walk across.
Well, we have a whole parking strategy where we will be in consultation with the whole area. And we've sort of worked out, is it twenty minute walk, half an hour walk?
Yeah, so typically when many of you.
Where we will set parking restrictions.
I've got some slides I've been talking to people.
So it's, it's not just here that will be protected, but it's these residents here, it's Cheltenham Hays as well. We, we've got a whole area that we've sort of worked out that that, that's twenty minutes, hour walk. Beyond that, people probably will not park because it's too far and they'll get the bus. So we have a strategy to deal with that as well. And there'll be consultation objectives.
Would it be interesting for you to tell people how a successful, um, concert goes on?
That's a nice slide. Can I get to it when I get to it?
I think that's a particular question, which is a very valid one.
It was interesting to see how, when they had the massive attack concert, that was very well done. You had plenty of, uh, shuttle buses. There was no parking in the outside streets in areas around our area, for instance, where people were seen to dump their car and then walk to the side. There was none of that. And I have to give you credit for what you did there. It showed a precursor to how that stadium.
Yeah. It was a good trial. But, but the reality is if we've got seventeen thousand capacity, there aren't going to be seventeen thousand cars. I mean, if we've got seventeen thousand capacity, that's gonna be a big band on the stage. The likelihood is the majority of those customers are going to be over the age of eighteen and probably wanting a drink. So very few will come. If, if you've got something like Disney on ice on Saturday afternoon and it's grandparents and children, they will all want to come by car. But the capacity will probably be four thousand. And if you've got grandparents and children, it's probably four people per car. So that's only a thousand cars. So and obviously there are all sorts of different connotations, you know, permutations between that. But the reality is, is actually that's when we can really start working with people and talking some of that, how easy this way to come is. So seventeen thousand capacity is most likely to affect, you know, or to, to attract people who won't be, and there will be people driving, but not that many. They're probably more likely to go home. That's a, a completely different story. So it's quite surprising. But we'll, again, we'll try and make sure they don't.
Very well planned. And it was in you?
Thank you very much. Yes, it worked. No, it wasn't. It was completely temporary. There was no one knowing where they were coming. So this just shows you some examples of where we might have park and rides. You can have one right down by Shirehampton. Um, and bringing people up on the M five up. We've got the Mall at Chris Court Road, we've got Parkway, um, I think it was University West England and Life Forest. So there's a whole different range. These are ideas about where we could, where we.
All these sites have been popular in our transport process.
You're picking it from Red Green, is it?
I don't think, well, we could do, these, these are all things that we've had conversations with and, and high level agreements.
Our transport structure, we've identified that the payment, the payment, uh, due back to the payment for payments.
I think the Shirehampton one's already there.
If they're, they're, they're all existing, so it's.
They all, they all exist, which is another thing. We both have to, you know, put more concrete in the ground. We're not planning to build anything, it's basically, even that mix is not sustainable. So that's the task, as we've, we've already mentioned, fourteen hundred, fourteen thousand people a night, over two nights in March last year. Um, last Fri- the Friday, they had a local rugby derby. So there were lots of other people and lots of other traffic. And on the Saturday night, there was, it was foul weather and there was a, an accident. Um, we had two thousand five hundred cars parked each night. Obviously, we would aim to be much less than that. Uh, but that's because there was no public transport and, and lots of people didn't know where they were coming. Uh, four thousand people used shuttle buses from, from the city cent- Bristol city centre. Uh, it took them twenty two minutes on average to get from a city centre to a hangar on a Friday night in Rush Hour.
An unhealthily food. It was really vegetarian.
No, that's, that's, and only eighteen minutes home.
No McDonald's. Shows that it can be done.
And I think it's quite a high risk thing for us to try and do it. You know, obviously we had to put this, build this arena on the, on the, um, airfield, uh, as you can see there, it was pouring rain one night. And also the wind was coming straight through up, up the channel. So there's that risk of, of noise pollution as well. Um, but the arena as well, it was closing, it was tucked in and, and the wind was coming in different directions. And it's gonna be acoustically loud. So that's a issue, probably, when we said. And we were really pleased because beforehand, the media was talking about, you know, apocalypse and traffic calm again. And, and that was the Bristol Post on the Monday morning. So that was, for us, it really gave us confidence that what we've been talking about, what we're planning and proposing actually works, which for us was great. Um, and, and hopefully for, you know, there will, there will always be complaints, but hopefully most of the surrounding residents were relatively happy. I know that, um, I think it was Darren Jones, the MP, put out a social media, quite just saying, how did it go? And he said he didn't get a single complaint, which is amazing. And we know that some people did complain, but, but there was relatively few. And it was, it was more about, um, some, some people could hear the noise one night when the wind was blowing in a certain direction. And we get that, but, uh, as a one-off sort of practice run, it was, it was, um, so validating what, what we were aiming to do.
Since being, being district councillor for a particular area, I've got the privilege of, of, of that. So all Y T L's about, that is from my, my ward.
Right.
Um, yeah, it's, it's amazing. Um, I will tell you, I did actually get a few complaints from residents about the noise. Because they weren't, couldn't land enough.
But they didn't get free experience.
I thought I could hear it.
I could definitely hear it.
Heart rate. Because of no muscle attack.
Oh, they wanted to hear it.
Along, along the, along the road there, they, they, they get too close. But they, they did, a few of them went down. My daughter went too.
It was good. And they did a really good job of, of providing food and drinking on site as well. So it was, it was really nice.
Pudding?
No, it was, it was a lot of falafel and veggie stuff.
Yeah, over there.
Cause I think they're vegan, aren't they? Muscle attack, or, or vegetarian, anyway. So one of the things that's really important to offer is that this has got to be a benefit to everyone. Uh, we really want to make it something that local people feel that ripple effect. Um, we think probably it, um, attracts about one and a half million people visitors every year. Um, just in tourism alone. So in overnight stays and food and drink while they're staying overnight. Uh, talking to destination Bristol and using the formula they use, that will bring in about sixty million pounds to the area. We will be sourcing products locally, products and services. We're saying seventy five sentences, we haven't quite identified all of them, but we will, um, definitely be sourcing at least seventy five sentences of products and services locally. And what we mean by that is, is obviously, um, all the food, drink, things like that. So that local businesses will be coming and producing, you know, giving us their, their products. Uh, and we hope that will then employ local people, boost the local economy and, and really create a sort of sustainable sort of ecosystem of, of business around the area, which will be really, really important to us. It's important from that point of view, but it's also important that we want people to know what we're all about. We don't want you to come into Y T L arena and think you're in Birmingham. We want you to come into Y T L arena and know exactly where you are and to go away knowing that you've been here and not somewhere else. We wanted to have that South West Bristol feel about it. So people can feel really proud of it. We always say we want locals to come in and feel at home. And we want people from afar to come in and want to come back because they've got something new and different. It's no point having it like an airport lounge where you could be anywhere in the world. You know, we, we want this to have a, a really special feel and a real experience. And part of that is celebrating that heritage, cause, you know, we're rightfully proud of what we, you know, what Bristol and South West has achieved here. Uh, we'll start with a living wage policy, not minimum wage, which is also really important from a sustainability point of view. Um, and we, as I say, creating up to five hundred new jobs. That's broad spectrum. That's from cleaners, maintenance, security, legal, um, I T, uh, stage management, hospitality. It's right the way through. So you could start as an apprentice at the bottom and work your way right up to the top. Coming on a part-time basis. And as I say, living wage policy as the starting point is really important to us. And we want to employ locally. We don't want to bring people from somewhere else. We want local people to really feel that benefit and to feel this.
And what if you permanent contracts?
Pardon?
Permanent contracts.
Yes. So even if we only need you every third Saturday, it will become, you will know what is better, zero hours contract. Absolutely will employ people in, might be very, very small part-time, but that's what works for them. But it will absolutely be, will never be zero.
It's a two-way thing then.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yes, of course, yes. Well, yeah, we, we want people to be part of it. Uh, we talk a lot about, um, how we want everyone to feel part of that team. And that's part of the sourcing local products and services so that those people also feel part of that team. It's really important that we're embedded in the community. We want to be seen as good neighbours and we want to have that relationship with the, with the community. Um, as I say, employing local people. And we've talked already to, um, colleges about we may have certain jobs that we can't, we can't find the people locally with skills, at which point we'll be saying we need an apprenticeship, we need to train these people up so that they've got those skills. It's absolutely essential. So my, we have to employ someone with the skills, but that's the Royal Post stuff. Yeah, so it's, that, that whole thing. Cause there'll be some jobs which are non-skilled. There'll be some, some jobs which are really highly skilled and we need to make sure that we come up for all those different types of opportunities for local people.
Yeah, the question, uh, regarding events. And it's interesting, I was actually a member on planning on South Derry, as you're assuming. Uh, when we had the arena, which the road was gonna be the road described, and we were using that for events, although we were a bit upset because it was incredibly limited, the number of events that they were gonna do. Do you? Keith came, I remember Keith, you were on with you then.
Yeah.
Um, cause I can remember Keith said to me, um, cause being lead member, it was, it was interesting. Um, Keith said, I want to propose it. I said, okay, well, you shouldn't have made your mind up yet, but it's up to you. So that's what he did. He proposed, he proposed it. And we approved it. Um, but it was limited, the amount of usage they could have. The supergroups were opening up, you know, a big group in there or something. But I think they were going to, to do that, were they? It was, uh, it was a little strange.
Well, I'll, I'll show you how we designed the arena to make sure we attract.
They were around that.
So have they, have they? Yeah, have they?
Now, I'm about to talk to you in two years and about ten percent of those will be major, in this testing test.
Cause it got to the child.
I'll, I'll show you how we're going to do that. Uh, but just as to reinforce what we're saying, uh, Liverpool has an arena with other things as well, which will, we're going to have an exhibition hall and a, a leisure hub. Um, and since they opened in two thousand and eight, they had, they, um, estimated, they generated about one point eight billion into the local economy. And Glasgow, just last year, four hundred and fifty seven million, the same type of model that we're proposing. So there's real potential for us to do something really exciting and for it to have a fantastic, positive local, that, um, effect in the area.
I think it's Y T L as well.
No, no, they're just examples of other, because a lot of arenas are just an arena.
Yeah.
But what we're proposing is more than that. And these are the same model and that, that's how they're, they're generating it. So lots of arenas are just an arena, but they're publicly subsidised. And in order to make it a successful business, you can't just open a hundred and forty days a year. You can't guarantee the employment. You can't make enough money to keep the thing running. You need the public subsidy. So what we need is to be able to run as a, as a private business and run successfully. And obviously it's a huge amount of investment that Y T L's putting in and they need to know that they're gonna get their money back at some stage. So we need to have that, this other, and I'll, I'll explain what we're planning to do. We need to have more than just, just an arena. It just doesn't stand up on a, on a business case on its own. Um, Bristol's the only city in the U P that doesn't have an arena. So take this little white square out, because we don't have it yet. There's all these other places. And, uh, so if you imagine that the big ones are the O two and Manchester. So if you've got a big band, for example, or a big event, and they're doing a world tour, they do London, Manchester and possibly Glasgow. The whole of this part of the country is completely, so you're either, here locally, you're either paying to go to London, paying to go to Manchester, you've got a train or a car or a coach or a bus. You've got a journey, you're probably staying overnight. All that money is leaking out to the South West. So we need to bring it back in and make sure that we benefit from it. But also that us locals don't have far to travel. It's ridiculous. So it's really important for Bristol, if it wants to compete on that level with Liverpool, Manchester, Leeds, Birmingham, we need, we need something here. It's really missing out at the moment. So that, that's, and, and the, the sort of live event entertainment, uh, market is growing massively. And in fact, millennials, apparently they like to spend money on experiences, not on consumable, consumable goods. So that's a really big business that, that's growing and you know, we really need to make, make sure that we harness some of that and that, you know, we locally benefit from it. And just to reiterate, a hundred percent private investment, Y T L is paying for this. It's not publicly funded in any way. They'll, they'll spend the entire amount and everyone keeps asking how much. All I can say is more than a hundred million. Uh, but we haven't, until we get planning and we know exactly what we can do, we haven't typed it down beyond that.
I think, I think you're right with Bristol, it's better about doing plans for the arena which isn't gonna happen.
Well, we've been told that if, if they built it to the city centre, it would cost about a hundred eighty million.
Well, I think my consultations already think we've spent a huge amount of money already.
They said about ten million for each, haven't they? I don't, I don't honestly, I don't know.
Nineteen million.
Nineteen.
Ninety million, but there you were. Ninety, ninety.
One nine, one nine.
But the cost, the projected cost of the build just escalated.
Prime, shall I be on the prime price?
So this is, these are the, these are the hangars. This is as they are now. They're huge. The twenty six acre site is larger than the O two in London. It's got plenty of room to play with. You could fit two large football pitches and a hockey pitch on the site. There are three, you can see three different bases. Uh, birthplace of concord, all of British concords were assembled inside and their Virgin flights were up the runway. Uh, and this is what we're, we're proposing. It's, but it's not just an arena. We want it to be three hundred and sixty five days a year. We want it to be really, um, worth for everyone. So we've got cities, the central hangar, seventeen thousand and eighty, that puts us third in the country. So all those big worldwide tours, we'll do London, Bristol, Manchester, Glasgow. And that's what we really want to secure. But we're not just talking music, we're also talking other things. So for example, Liverpool hosted the World Cup, Netball this last summer. Um, we've spoken to them. If they knew that this was here and they could come, they would come here, they've already said so. BBC Sports, personality of the year, they'd come here. And the reason they come, if we're not just proposing a seventeen thousand arena, we're also proposing a festival hall, huge flat space area, which means you've got main event in here. If it's Netball, you'd have shows in here, you'd have warm-ups in here, training in here. If it's BBC Sports, personality of the year, that was in Aberdeen. Uh, they had the bit that we all watched on the telly in the arena. They had a whole load of community sporting events for about a week or two in the run-up to it in here. And that's what we're talking about. We're not just talking about music on a stage. We're talking about bringing in a whole host of other events as well. Alternatively, you could have Stormzy on the main stage, wedding fair or boat show or. Alternatively, you could have Stormzy on the main stage, wedding fair or boat show or ideal home exhibition or Bristol fashion show, whatever it is, we could do anything in there at the same time as the show in here. Or together, they then bring in some of those things we just aren't attracting to the west country at all. So it really raises the game and and gives us all sorts of other opportunities. And of course, that means a show on a Saturday night, that means business delegates all weekend here, coming in and then everyone, so everyone who's got a boat, who's showing their boats in here for the idea for the boat ex- um show, for all those people who are coming here rather than Olympia or Alstom or wherever else. So that's then really bringing in those really exciting opportunities, which drives our business from point of view of employment and encouraging those jobs. But also, all those people coming to stay in Bristol and South West and all those guest houses and hotels, it really starts making a big difference then. So that's really important and then added to that, oh, sorry, we've got the hut, which is a leisure day-to-day. People coming in for food and drink in here, um, we've been talking to some um leisure organisations who are interested in coming in and taking up space here, which would drive business on a much more daily basis, so it'd be some sort of uh leisure activity or some sort of um visitor attraction. I I we can't, we can't tell you, I'm really sorry, because it's the most annoying thing in the world when people do that. But hopefully, if we get planning commission, we'll be able to announce some exciting things and people will want to come and take up that space. And that will be, you know, local community sort of things that people will be able to benefit.
Not big franchises.
No. If it's, if it was a franchise, it would be a sort of franchise which doesn't feel like a fran- you know, it might, they might have two or three others, but it wouldn't be a, um, not, we're not talking McDonald's.
Not enough space to join.
Good, good.
Stokos, I think, again, will be well.
Yeah, yeah, they're great, really good, we, yeah, we're we're fine, I think, we're we're we'll wait and see.
We've seen the twin of, you know, the week.
Yeah, well, no.
We had the rooms grand, but then that didn't happen because we weren't getting permission from public way.
Well, we're just pushing.
Bristol and, you know, we we're, we've said it before, we're like happy to stay here, we're still probably going in my way.
Well, I'll show you later how we're working with both, we've done a lot of consultation and discussion. So this is what it will look like, part of celebrating heritage is glazing the roof, so you can see it and see all that brilliant steel structure. This is what it'll look like in the day, you're crossing a bridge, you're walking into the hangars from there. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped these, but, so safety first, obviously, security, Manchester Arena, uh, we need to make sure that people are safe in our site, so if all the customers will come through here, there'll be touch points of security to go through. Uh, all the deliveries, all the crew, the kit, stage managers will go round the back, so those big lorries are nowhere near the people, so we can keep that security and safety accessible for everyone. We want it to be easy to get to, both from the transport that we've touched on, but also from mobility, um, issues, make it as open and accessible to everyone. I've said it'll be the third largest, it'll be flexible for all events, as I've explained, and and carbon neutral, which we've also touched on. This just gives you an idea of an evening, what it'll look like, so these are lifts taking you down if you don't want to go straight through. And you can see sort of the lighting in the evening and dusk. And then also, we've got the ability to then project on there, so whatever you're interested, it could say netball or it could say Beyonce or whatever, so there'll be opportunities. So that's a sense of anticipation of something about to happen as you arrive and so the excitement of your, the event you're coming to. This shows you the festival hall, so this is the big flat open space for exhibitions, we've put on Bristol graduate show, that it could be a whole host of events separately or, as I said, connected to the arena. And this shows you the other, the leisure hub, so we've got, we've just put in a basketball court and a climbing wall and then food and drink. Um, so that'd be sort of like a day-to-day, quite street sort of environment. We're we're going to try as much as possible to um make it feel quite industrial, because we thought that was flexible. Um, one of the things to show you how it'll be flexible, we have a, um, the seating goal like this with at the back, it's more like a theatre. So if you've got your seventeen thousand capacity, um, big show, then the stage is here and that's full when people are on the floor. You can move the stage down until you've brought it right down to here and you've just got this end which will be here. And that creates a bit more like a theatre, so here, you could have four thousand or six thousand people and that's more like a comedy show. Or you could have a West End show or um ballet, opera, cinema and orchestra, so that makes it much more like theatre and that's four thousand. So locally, we've got a platform, well, obviously, there is a two thousand, but there's nothing bigger than that. So that allows us to attract all those different things, so when we talk about a hundred and forty shows a year, ten percent will be the big seventeen thousand. Rest of the year, we'll have all of these and we could have things like here, I've seen the Disney on Ice in the middle, so there's a whole wide road there to different ways. We can sort of like uh use space, all the red markings around are accessible. Quite often, you go to an arena and you've got the choice of five seats in one place, if you particularly use a wheelchair. We want it to be much more inclusive, so that everyone can enjoy it and have those choices that the rest of us enjoy. This shows you what it would be like in concert mode, full seventeen thousand, big capacity. Uh, this shows you the theatre end, so it gives you that sort of feel of uh what it might be like, you've got a stage post here. These are usually the cheap seats, the gods, we've turned that into a dining view, so you can sit up there and have tapas and a drink while you're listening to a comedy show. I personally think that's the best seat in the house, and if not Russell Hammond or someone here, that's the best seat in the house, as far as I'm concerned, but um and that tickets will be priced differently depending on where you sit, obviously, so that's not necessarily cheap, but it won't be the most expensive. I I know, I know.
Oh, good question.
Can can we have some tickets today, please? As we're here. Do we get, do we get free tickets? I would be accused of my riding. That's fine, that's fine, we don't need to.
Wait until they got that.
They'll obviously taste us as we practise and stretch, I think, the first year.
My chance.
But also in competition to the local community organisations, people like to try and give you opportunities to come, so we may not be able to offer you reduced, but we definitely will offer things where you've got the opportunity to come for not very much, so.
I I'd rather agree with, uh, Brian, if you, we we have, uh, yeah. We should have slightly reduced to be, who's coming in from the outside, because it's.
Less carbon, carbon friendly.
Anyway, that was just a thought.
We have, we need, we need to make some money.
You've got to make some money, yeah.
We'll let them send us tickets to be prepared. We'll definitely have, we'll definitely have practice runs where we'll need guinea pigs to come in, so um, I've got, I've got cards on, I mean. So this shows you sporting, this shows you a um central where you've got um in in the round. There, we moved the stage out and we brought in temporary seating, so you can sit all the way around it. We'll have premium, as I said, dining view, club lounges, premier pubs, so people could spend more money if they want to, you could buy your tickets and you could upgrade and have different things. You have access to different lounges and bars, we're not going to have a an arena where you walk in, get your bag checked, go and stand in a queue, buy your plastic pint and go and sit down, we're going to have bars and restaurants and things, so it'll be much more of a whole experience. Much more social, you can flex, you know, meet your friends and you have different types of tickets that you can all go meet, have a drink beforehand, so that that's more what we're thinking of. And then as a general access, um, for everyone, we're going to create what we're calling the runway bar, which will be on the ground floor, the hundred metre width of the ground floor, a huge space and that will have local food and produce and it will just showcase what we did really well here, so local, we've already talked to people like Bristol Beer Factory. Um, food and drink, there'll be a community stage, so locals will have a chance to perform. Uh, you know, they have chances to like try out, you know, lighting and stage management as well, so they'll have a whole area where they can showcase, if you imagine that people are coming in to see a really big band and you're playing on the community stage beforehand, what an opportunity that will be. So we really want that to feel like it's local and and we hope that's where people come and hang out, so that's really very good for us. Um, sustainability, we've touched on, we're committed to, uh, we're signed up to the UN Sustainability Development Goals and also local policies from both authorities. Just as a pull-out, the living wage, as I've talked about, economic sustainability, yeah, and sourcing our food, um, and produce locally. Diversity of staff, we want to reflect the community that we're we're sort of embedded in. Things like single-use plastic is a is a no-brainer, obviously. And then we'll uh do a lot of har- water harvesting, so we'll capture the rainwater and that will do things that flush the loose, which will reduce the amount of water consumption. And also, the roofs are huge and we'll have solar panels on them, so that we can, uh, hopefully, long-term, we'll have battery storage and we'll be able to self-generate it and run um run really efficiently. That's a little bit more, so for example, just by not knocking down the hangars and having to build from scratch, we're saving eighteen thousand six hundred um tonnes of CO2 emissions. Um, in Bristol City, they have all the trees around Bristol and they're planting more, absorb about fourteen thousand. So it's more than all the trees in Bristol absorb in carbon emissions every year. Um, and I did a little Google search and it's more than twelve thousand return trips on a a return aeroplane for from London to New York and back, so it's a hell of a lot of carbon emissions that we're saving just by using the buildings.
Time, times change, I was an architect in the sixties, like, was it working for the park, which we actually did the Bristol United Press Building uh, and the whole market. And it's so funny, because the the planning department wanted us to build a brick, which actually looked like all the yellow brick buildings. But we did something innovational to make it different and we actually put trees on the big model, which we would have put in around the area and they went nuts, they said, you can't put trees down in Bristol, it will grow, it's also concrete.
Yeah, but you need the trees to take that cost of energy.
But that's what we did, we actually got, we got it done, but the planners were objecting at the time, they said it was impossible because of roads and pavements and how the hell do you get trees in there?
Well, times have changed massively because we've done a whole big thing on landscaping and planting them, so obviously native where we can. Um, this just shows you through a size point of view, the outside area, this red square is the same size as Millennium Square in Bristol. So it just shows how much outside space we've got to to play with and to activate. And uh, we've got a whole landscape and some plan to how we're going to do that, to make this a really nice pleasant area. It's actually, although, plenty of trees and uh absorbing all that and that and all that. So just to clarify, five applications, the change of use of the hangar as they exist today is with Bristol City Council. We've then got an application for the bridge which spans the railway line from South Gloucestershire into Bristol. Uh, so that's both councils, we've then got amendments to an access point which will then create a bus gate through. Um, but will also allow us to bring all our deliveries around the back, uh, and no other transport will get through there, it'll be sort of secure. Um, and and sort of checks as they come through. Temporary parking on the runway while while we're working through how we need to round social out and then the design codes, it's just part of the planning application. So there are all these five, they're in at the moment, they're under consultation, you can go and put comments on if you want to. I'm sure as a council, you'll you'll form a thinking of your own, from a public point of view, you can also comment, it's open to everyone. A timeline, just to give you an idea, we did a feasibility, are are the hangars going to work, could that be possible? Uh, the executive team, we appointed me, Russell, our managing director, Andrew Billingham, who led the Ashton Gate development. Uh, and we have other other colleagues as well, it's about seven or eight of us now, quite a small team. We then went and employed a design team, that included architects, um, acoustics experts, transport experts, engineering experts. What else, all sorts, sound and what else?
Sound, lighting, ecology.
Lighting, all sorts of, yeah, sustain, sustainability, landscape, so we brought all of them together and we produced the the plan. Uh, then in the summer, we said, right, that's it, stop now, because we've got to stop, think about our planning application. We put our planning application in last year, just before the end of the year in November. We anticipate going to Bristol City Council, uh, early March, what we're hoping for. But hopefully sometime, there are a couple of of committee meetings in March, so hopefully one of those, they'll they'll make a decision and we just have to hope for the best and that they make what we would consider the right decision. And then we go through a whole phase of detailed, technical, um, design work. And that's okay, we know we've got to do acoustics, we know these are what we've got to achieve, what's the best way of doing that, what's the best it gives us uh, solution to those, all those sorts of things and that could take up to a year to do all of that work. And then we anticipate construction will be a couple of years with an opening date, we hope, of early twenty twenty-three. That is obviously reliant upon us getting planning permission, but if we do in March, we hope to open early twenty twenty-three. We've done quite a lot of consultation, it's great to see people here tonight, but we've, you know, we hope you'll you'll soon be able to tell our people about what our plans are. We did a survey, ninety-six percent of people were supportive of us. And the the three and a half percent who weren't, it was because they were concerned about things like noise or transport and actually when we had conversations with them, they went, oh, oh, right, as long as you do, as long as you do that, we're fine. So the really, the other three and a half percent is just as long as we deliver, which is great. And ninety-nine point nine percent, in fact, I've only spoken to one person who doesn't want an arena in Bristol, so please don't tell me you don't. Because I'll have to check that thing, but people just want us to get it done.
We're going to Bristol.
Oh, and I'm sorry, we're making South Gloucestershire, so although the the principle, the main planning application is Bristol, it's very much this area that we we consider, we, yeah, hopefully, going to do it.
Well, I think it's going to be absolutely fantastic, as long as the traffic is sorted out.
Of course, exactly, can I play my little video just to the wall?
Oh, yeah.
There's the slow noise, no, there's the sound, I can't, I'm sorry, it's just telling you that we're just brilliant.
Can we get popcorns, why?
Thank you very much, I appreciate you taking up a lot of your time, so I apologise for that.
I think, I think it's a, um, it's a fact for our.
Well, thank you, you're fine.
With such enthusiasm and such a smile, we're thrilled. I used to think we'd talk a lot, but people tell me that.
You do, Brian.
At least we're talking about interesting stuff, the people are listening to it.
Well, we feel quite, you know, passionately about it, but, you know, please, if there are any questions, do ask or if you haven't got time now, I can leave my cards and you can contact us. Okay, shall I leave from here and then any members?
Are you still doing tours on there for the public? Did they want to go and have a look?
The third Wednesday of every month, the next one's the nineteenth of February.
Well, we're staying.
Um, there are ten of us.
For his birthday, nineteenth of February.
If I give you some cards.
At the Bravo.
You just need to register so we know you're coming, so thank you, this is card, then you can now get your card. Yes, I think so.
Sorry, I missed the bit, I should have been missing it.
Isn't that right? Accessible, so we're, yes, all over, so it'll be all over.
I'm so desperate to take my son to a concert, but I can never ever get tickets to the Bravo.
No, well, there will be and we'll sort out all of them. Yes, no, we're going to talk about it, sorry.
Where do we register?
Just email me and I'll send you the information, okay? And it's nineteen. So if you take the kids, that's only the baby.
Daniel for his birthday.
Can I have it?
I'll take them all to work.
Thank you very much, that was really impressive.
Shall we work consulting?
I think we've got to. So there is a, sorry, there is a public, um, facility, I'm doing my, I'm doing my job now, I suppose, to tell you. You can log on to Bristol Planning, you can search for the arena and you can put comments in. We're trying to get people to do comments, in fact, if you email, I'll send you the link.
Oh, I actually work on the door, I work in the back.
Oh, do you? Well, tell your colleagues how we're doing.
And I work for Bristol City Council, so I can.
You may not be allowed to comment then, you have to do it in your person.
I was going to say, yeah, I'm letting, I'm just going to thank the colleagues, fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah.
So it's now past eight, um, I think some people will go home, so we're better, whatever. I'm okay, I'm just enjoying that.
Didn't we do that?
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Sharon, for.
Stephanie works going out and look now, it's going to let them have a look around, it's really interesting, you know, the way I normally do it. The buildings and everything as they are.
Right, yeah, the paper here, we've got two things for the same address for sixty-seven markers mean, numbers three and twelve on the sheet, is it worth taking them together?
They're not, they're wrong, aren't they? I think you'll find that the one on the back, item twelve, is a different address.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion, that, sixty-seven markers mean.
Sorry, I just haven't changed the, um, the, not markers mean.
It's the HMO, it's sixty-seven markers mean.
There's quite a few on there, aren't there?
I'm going to have that one too, everybody else.
Pass on then.
We're still going to have an update on the, uh.
Yeah, just to say that the, um, the funding director of the, 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 the appeal, sorry.
Yeah, if if anybody, um, wants to make to the document, then do email me and I'll send it to you. Um, because we've we've had the, uh, the proper document with all the details on. There hasn't been any, um, request for Stokos to share to make any kind of penalty payment, I mean. Probably we've all been into that personally, that's another matter, likely. Okay, right. Got that on planning appeal, we've done that, so now we have a previous planning application, we've got the planning environment issue for you.
Just sorry, we've got it tabled.
And to prepare responses for that.
Oh, and also to let you know that there is an appeal, another appeal in for the refusal of planning permission. Oh, and also to let you know that there is an appeal, another appeal in for the refusal of planning permission, that's forty-three Percy Drive. Household, uh, people represent.
And then seven, we've got.
Hundred and seven, yeah.
Move on to, you know.
Yep, take now.
Prepare responses for proper authorities who've got a planning application relating to five six, also for the planning details on the website and for its funding and list.
Yeah, uh, um, you've got that table because there's a lot more coming. Number twelve, it's my, it's obviously a copy and pasted from something else. I haven't changed the address. It's actually, uh, unit two, Great Park Road. Not sixty-seven bark.
So it's thirteen today, am I right?
Okay, so number one. Action on single story rear extension and garage conversion to provide additional unit accommodation, twenty seven beaches. So it is. This house here?
Hmm.
It's that one in the corner there, actually. Okay. Can't get to the back of it, but that's just to show you the context of where other houses are. It's being accommodations, excuse my spelling.
I'm sorry, you've got a bit of a hassle on the personal camera, but I'm not gonna offend you.
Could be a mix. So that's what's there at the moment. At the minute. So it's going from that.
Hmm.
To that.
It's that big a block.
Across there.
That's at the back?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Move it, Sharon.
There's, um, that's.
Move it.
Yeah. There's nothing from any of the residents which has been in the system a very long time.
Yeah, I, yeah, key objection? Yeah, key proposal, I said.
Fill that please. It's quite a tiny statue.
That one.
Yeah. Unanimous. 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 I can't believe you said the third one. Thanks for those, yeah. They're muted, do you?
Okay.
They've got, you couldn't have told us anyway. You don't like it. You're asking for a project. For my P D R. No, it's just differently. And then it's quite amazing, because quite a few tend to want to pay for it.
Yeah, I've got.
Most of brandy stokers take it. If if you, you think it's gonna work, it's there. Same, it's not going to happen to, there's a speaker in the projector.
Okay, next one. B nineteen, one nine, one zero five C L P. So that's a application for certificate of lawfulness. Uh, direction of a single story rear extension at hundred and two Saxon Way. So it is this house here.
It's a.
That's a big house.
There's a bunch. It's gonna be enormous.
And they're already doing that.
Are they?
Yeah.
So that's what's there at the moment.
Something about lawfulness.
Oh, I see. It's a retrospective for Poonam.
Is it a conservatory?
So that's what's there at the moment. You've got sort of bits and pieces here.
Oh.
And you're just lining it up to make it all one thing rather than having betweeny bits.
Oh. That's fine.
No, it's, no problem.
That's fine. Okay, please put on that.
Hang on, just propose more direction.
Keep shining.
Yeah.
The second is.
Feeling or Michael.
Michael, Michael.
Although very helpful.
They are right and true.
Yeah, very much.
You notice when if you're planning applications, it needs to get to be bigger. They never make anything bigger.
Go big. And if you get it, fun. You can always decrease it.
Or not use the enormous space.
Okay, um.
There's gonna be a lot of Airbnb's.
Three, B nineteen, same as we're planning.
Wow. So, yes.
It's back there.
So, okay, it's, it's, yeah, it always says three, yeah, that means it's a god.
It's a god.
Oh, wow, okay.
Maybe I'm using wood, but if the rights haven't been removed.
So this is. This one here.
Because in wrong state, on, on Mars, probably developed rights could be removed.
Yeah.
So in the real world, where normal supply could be a domestic development, we would have a.
It's this house here.
I will make a note of that.
I think it's already there, it's retrospective.
And the problem is, it's very rare to, uh, excuse me.
So, this is the. I've, it says existing, but I'm guessing it's not existing because it's retrospective.
Not far from that.
It's not sixty-seven, is it?
Okay, so yeah, so that's what's there at the moment.
These rooms are the month ups.
So that's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Now, this is just.
That's upstairs, isn't it?
This was just the house as it was. So it's one, two, three, four bedrooms.
Yeah.
One less one.
I'm gonna form a safe word, so.
Yeah, and this is what is.
Less words. Do they say they're, that's in H M O's?
No, no, because they were.
See, Bristol, they do, don't they?
Yeah.
Well.
What's that?
H M O's.
Then what was it? They, they come back bathroom, and then what was it? Bathroom in there and made that into like stairs.
I assume that. I'm sure that, I'm free. Yeah, it's a now, now, yeah. That bathroom is now a bathroom.
I'm interested in seeing what they're doing in bath.
And on the scene.
One, two, three, four.
They're stopping Airbnb's or try. Yeah, I've seen that. But they, in Bristol, they wouldn't let them get away with it.
Three downstairs, one, two, three downstairs.
Six minutes.
The kitchen area and dining room is, wow.
Well, because they think that it's.
They, I think trading for hotels.
So there are three.
Yeah.
There are three comments from them. There's an email off and comments going across the board.
It's a room.
Absolutely.
I couldn't make it. Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
They should offer low packs.
There are objections to that.
At the end of the day, they're offering a certain. That objection is just predominantly transport and parking. And people will go, or maybe they can get the best in.
Uh, yeah, it's constantly very kind of me.
I can, but even. I can, but even.
Oh, I, I have.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, but on your computer, like.
I'm just saying if the house was made bigger, but it's not, but it's.
They need to go to more, except that.
Quite a small house, I would agree.
Yeah.
So I didn't text it, so I can, the, um.
What is, what are the objections from the neighbours?
Right, hang on a minute.
Predominantly parking.
Find, uh. The, um, email, which can't be opened on here.
Yeah.
Says, in looking at this proposal, I'm mindful that parking provision for HMOs usually relate to fifty percent of the number of bedrooms, which is the same ratio as as for four bedroom dwellings and above. In this instance, we would require four off-street car parking spaces, whilst the plan indicates three, which would not be acceptable. It's noted that the frontage of the site has been block paved and contrary to the site plan that shows three spaces, four spaces could easily be achieved. However, although the frontage has been blocked, blocked, paved to provide off-street car parking, the three of the four car parking spaces are currently not accessible due to the full height curve fronting the property. In the event of approval, therefore, I would require the following condition. Within one month of any approval, the footway fronting the property is required to be changed to a big crossover with dropped curves. Details, uh, to be submitted for approval with the works completed, etc., etc.
Because, because they're already in a phase, I see, they can't actually say before, no, it shouldn't, that's gotta be done.
So the, um, there's three objections from members.
But this is licensing, right? Everybody parking, what can you object to? I mean, it's, it's the old story with all of it. We've got waste, we've got extra storage, cycle storage, waste storage.
Speaking of bedrooms.
This is one of the objections.
They, you know, I mean, this is the issue of day, and I mean, we have a doctor came to take a family visit. And she was right, what she said.
Can you go to the.
What were effect, in what we're effectively doing is turning the clock back to slum style housing with inadequate ventilation in rooms and.
Sorry.
You know, it's.
Is it already done?
Sanitation.
H M O regulations are so strict, there wouldn't be a.
My god.
But I think it's been done since twenty seventeen.
Really?
Read that somewhere. I've read of that.
That's true, it is.
I might be lying on that.
But you know, this one, this is a meta construction. I thought it's a conservatory or something, something used to come. But the feeling, this was a circular, really on.
How many, how many accommodation is this one?
Yeah, it's like a change in size.
Eight, you know. See, it's getting more. We've got seven. Well, see, I, I pretty certainly Bristol was limited to six. Yeah, well, you look up So Park, most of the houses up there are interned in, in fact, it's a whole estate, which was.
You guys are complaining. I mean, I've read through it.
You know, expensive housing and already there's thirty houses.
Twenty.
Yeah, there are.
All of the top of the market.
Description of the proposal, please state the date when the work or change of use started, June two thousand and seventeen. So it's two and a half years.
Twenty.
So it's three days, two and a half years.
You're a penalty.
Yeah, but it's.
In Bristol.
You're a penalty because.
And we've got the major moves. Is that a, is that a consultant?
Yeah, it's eighteen.
Because I suspect in Bristol. The bad there, where they turn them into nine.
Hmm.
It's sort of, you buy your small rooms, you know.
Give it the commercial garage, okay, something like that.
Prove a chair, okay, please? Right, okay. And what I'll just point out, there's been objections. I mean, one particular one said there's potential for noise, there's potential disturbance, potential for this, potential for that. Reality matter is, that thing has been in place. What I think we should query is with the, um, has there been any complaints? Has there been any incidents with the face? Has there been this and that? Who should answer that?
Hmm.
Um, you know, because in reality, you know, this is already there. If, if in fact, they can come back to us with a clean slate, then we can't be seen as a problem. We can't do much about it. I mean, we could say that amenity space, we don't feel the amenity space for house of this size with this number of bedrooms, these number of people living together is sufficient. Because it did appear the kitchen is the standard kitchen, but the lounge has been reduced in size. People wouldn't get to get together, so.
We need to comment on it tonight because we've had an extension already for this from the twenty.
Better. These to send. Right, so I would like to propose objection, but I just want to ask a quick question, Sharon. Was there a comment from sustainable transport on there?
I remember that on.
Because, I mean, my objection would be around the fact that I don't think this complies at all with anything else we're asked to consider about transport.
Yeah, that was the email I've just read out.
Right, sorry, no, so then I would, I would go with, I would propose objection.
They, they don't have a problem apart from having the dropped curb putting, because they're saying that.
Why, it's one, I would want to reject.
I.
Oh, cycles. Oh, cycles, very good. Just, just English, because if the HMOs generally put in cycling, but they're saying there's enough parking for cars.
But they have got a proposed cycle shed as well, haven't they?
Okay.
Now, she says erection of cycle shed as part of this.
Yeah, it's on the application, the erection of cycle shed.
Overdevelopment.
Why, I, 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 I bring a bed.
Yeah.
No, because it's sweet, it's like studio flats, but how can you really swing a cat at it? Which isn't, no, which isn't, you need to have space.
But that's the planning issue.
But that's not planning.
I know it's not.
I'm trying to, but. Balance of when you have other communications.
Yeah.
For your territory or something.
But it's no interior to change the number of people.
Especially in small rooms.
It is.
Yeah.
But I, I.
This is, I think, not the objection, we, I would like to actually penalize because of actually doing that.
Oh, I'll say.
I've got cycling there to. Without the permission, you know. It's not a small team, it's there.
Yeah.
So what happens if it's rejected? What, what happens?
You've been, you've, you've been quite through the back. Then you're going to face all sorts of legal challenges.
You can be there.
They could last some years, decades, trying to get things like that. I'll see if.
But like in Oregon, will only pay council tax once.
Yeah.
And he's got eight flats.
So then propose objection and you're like, so.
Yeah, but you must, the, the, the council tax must be commensurate with the number of people that occupy.
No, it's property. And if you, if you convert your carriage.
So have an objection for brands that got protection.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I support that.
Overdevelopment.
Yes.
Yeah. When it's not developed.
And not normally upkeep, not keeping in the area.
Parking is an issue, isn't it?
Yeah.
Parking.
It hasn't been developed, the prop, the.
But somebody's proposed a solution over.
Change of use, though. It's a plan, it's a planning development.
Yeah, that is for development, is the change of use, is what it is. Yeah, so over.
Over intensive use.
Yeah, I'm on that. Need to space.
Over.
Parking.
So those people are living in those rooms, they don't have to pay all the tax.
Not enough attention to sustain them.
No, they would, it's through the property.
Well.
No, it's the.
Insufficient parking and.
One property.
Amenity provision.
Yes.
Insufficient parking and.
You do it on the number of occupants of the H M O. Yeah, they're saying it's.
I'm sure, I'm sure the owner of the property will make the rent fair in line, the fact of how much he's going to have to pay.
Yes, you know, I think we could point, we could point out, when you have, okay, you've got separate people living.
I know, but I'm thinking about the community, about the fact that you've got like eight people there.
I have a six bed with that Bristol.
Okay, separate place.
And we paid ordinary expenses and basically they paid us rent.
Yeah.
So we covered expenses and paid us a rent.
But I'm thinking more about, I was going to do about the, the revenue.
Still, you could have a car.
I know, but it's not like that, essentially, because, you know, if you've got eight people.
Well, the H M O C, they'll chase them anyway, because, um.
No, I'm thinking more about what, what the council would earn from seven people living in that house.
Yeah.
Whereas if you've got two people living down the road and it's like, whatever it is for a, a, a property, you've then got seven people using all the services that council.
There's no difference that, parents have got adult children living at home.
Yeah. Well, you've got properties that's child, you've got a number of people in it.
Yeah.
What you've got to think of is the students, you have any rates.
There's, it's, 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 the rule is complicated because you can have, you, you, it's not based purely on the occup, the number of occupants in the property,
Do you mind?
But there are exemptions to that, where you have things like single occupancy.
Yeah.
This kind of.
And things like that. So that's where it's, that's where that starts paying to, it's done on the banding of your property.
Yeah.
And the banding changes by the amount of square footage you've got available to you as a property owner. Hence, converting a garage to a living space.
Yeah.
Return to change banding of the property.
You, you could end up with potentially seven flats, right? And four or five parking spaces and the tenants will change. Just suppose you had seven vans. How much room is that going to take up? A lot more than cars, will it? One, one guy could bring a lorry, couldn't he?
Objection is overdevelopment of the site, over intensity of the site, insufficient amenity space and parking provision.
And now of keeping with the area.
Yeah.
Well, this is.
Well, much like.
Well, yeah. Have we missed any out?
No, but the, but the actual building itself hasn't changed, it's inside, so it is within the keeping of it.
Well, I don't know.
Changing the, the.
As if, because it was a family area, it's trans, maybe this into eighteen.
Well, that's what I see, Bristol's totally different, it's all licensed.
Yeah.
Tiny flats, that's about keeping.
And they, they really are whole, right?
The white piece of the street.
So this is not needed licence, then, is it?
No, it's, 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 no, no, Bristol is licensed, it's inspected, there's.
Can we strongly object?
They've got, and they've got a section, section four.
I think strongly.
But also, you know, we've, we've, we've objected here, or.
Never the legislation in life, they can do what they want.
We can't say we strongly object.
So I could change, I want my.
We won't be set up a man ahead of them.
Yeah, you might modify that.
That's all you can say.
Can you have a first, please?
Yeah, 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 great.
Yeah, yeah, so there we go.
Then perhaps we'll modify it for that. We really don't have.
I could change, um, the property into a H O, into a.
So we put that in there.
Right.
Um.
You could.
And, oh, yes.
Yeah.
I think that should pass Stoke Giver, because that passed Stoke Giver.
What's that?
What is it?
H O. Yeah, of course, it's in the Parishes.
Yeah.
Percy Drive.
Which are more. We're in, in the district.
Mark is big.
Once a week.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, next.
It's not Parishes, it's in the, it's in the district. Right, Richmond, two storey ten, extension to form additional living accommodation for the beaches. Just putting sixteen bedroom on this one.
Right, okay, wait, I think, I'm having a bit of a mental breakdown, because it's not forty the beaches, it's forty the willows.
Oh.
Ah.
What I would say is.
Well, tree recognition, Sharon, is not very good.
All right, sorry?
Well, tree recognition is not very good.
Right. All I can apologise and say that I am double in extremis for the row, but.
I think it's, it's.
Your first page is probably double. Yeah.
And just so forty the willows on here are a positive, but the interesting bit is, when I tried to change the rename, it's got capital W, it won't let me do it.
Oh.
I have no idea why, because I've tried numerous times, and it won't let me change it to a capital W.
Is it because it's renamed?
Yeah, we lost our problem.
No, it just wouldn't let me change it.
Oh.
Anyway, so.
Perhaps it's licensed, second beaches.
Willows could be a noun.
Have you got the willows, it's very valuable.
Are you trying to talk into our computer?
Yeah.
Regularly. Right, it's this property here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, no.
I don't know.
No, 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 obviously.
Okay, it's, um, I can give you a, a street image, but it's, it's in the corner over here.
Okay.
Two strong side extension.
Oh, yeah. I suppose that is the hot.
I've been down that.
In the willows.
Some fine.
Did it get down there?
I've, I've been down that road as well.
Luckily, we have combined plans, it's always useful.
Cross here, cross here. On the corner.
Mm.
Oh, it's much better, combined plan, yeah.
Standard, yeah.
It's, uh, combined plan, yeah.
In a minute, okay, so that's what's there at the moment, and that's what they want to do.
Wow. Well, how close is that to the boundary? Yeah.
Oh, that's a ball.
Is that a funny shape? Yeah, it is. They're trying, trying their extension at the back, you mean.
Oh.
But it's a garden, isn't it, that, it's not.
It's a garden.
Yeah. So if you look at the floor plan, it's really weird.
Uh, if it's a garden there, that's all right, but if it was built in, it'd be different.
Oddly, though, if this garden's quite long, you could have approached and asked to buy the end of that garden.
Could do, yeah.
So that's what's there at the moment, right.
Talk about squeezing it in.
That's interesting downstairs, though, isn't it?
You have to careful, they're going over next door.
Or, sorry.
Actually, Gary, Gary's story looks like a shop print, in, uh, sort of like an area where you can't really sort of use a shop print, not.
Oh, it's.
And if, if the footings in, they're gonna have to go on next door as well.
Yeah.
There's no comment from anybody apart from sustainable transport, I've just been in the systems.
And there were water taxi.
It, it's, it's not quite small.
Yeah, it's, uh.
But what is strange about the extension?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but the issue is, they can along the other side, but when you actually put your foot, it's possible, possibly property.
It's, it's not straight like that, is it?
No, it's not a little wedge.
On this basis, additional ways, no additional.
Yeah, what's cheese?
What I can't see wrong there, I mean, it's their land, and, you know, it's not asking, posing any problems on anybody, so.
Their problem is gonna be.
Something needs to be addressed.
I'm sure that's, um, if it was a slightly bigger house.
Is it not their garden, it's going on to.
They're, they're building up to the boundary next door, so they've got to get.
I don't get that. I don't put toes on this one.
Oh, yeah.
More next door and.
Yeah, it's, it's actually slightly.
That's it.
Yeah, will be, yeah.
No, I'm not.
Should we get questions, Keith?
No.
I'm abstaining on this.
Do you think, Ben?
Sure you.
Right, Brian and Michael have proposed, no objection, take a vote, please.
I think it's up to the neighbours to complain, I don't.
But it's.
One.
I.
There's nothing actually wrong with it.
I don't know, but actually, you, put your hands up again if you're in favour.
No.
There's, there's no neighbours complaining then.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five.
No, not at the moment. Five. Five, although there's, maybe, there will be, actually.
Against. Extensions. Thank you.
I've got to see.
I can see it.
Need a sleep, won't you?
Yeah, that's right, I think we can sleep this.
Right, next one, um, E nineteen one eight four four zero F, installation of glazing to existing open calving at Bruntford Level on Southern elevation of building at Breeborn House. Fortified in Woodlands. So it is. This here, this one here, you can see the front bit there.
It's a bush, but.
And the street in a queue, so it's that.
Move it, Sharon.
If you want to fill it in.
No objection.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, propose, add something, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, move it.
Objection is okay.
Propose, it's too heavy, is that case?
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye, aye.
Oh, top.
Yeah, move it. Take the other side of that piece.
Is that unanimous?
Yeah.
You let me laugh, Keith, when Keith said.
So what was it, what was that? I've got a major question on the next one.
Who was Ellen Hay?
Ellen Hay, yeah.
Who was she?
Okay, that one, that one, hey, rude.
I don't, I've, I've researched it, and I still don't know.
What?
Who, who Ellen Hayes is.
That's Martin Davis.
Next one, is it a lot of person?
I don't know. I don't know, I, I Googled it all, not for a long time, but, but a while back, I Googled it all to try and see if I could find anything, and I couldn't.
Most of the names are associated with the farms, if, if we're in this area, so if you ask Martin Davis, he'll tell you.
It sounds like a farm, doesn't it?
Or one of the fields.
So I think this one is, this.
We had it go from the north, actually, and then go to the field, so it's looking nice.
Here.
Okay.
That's why my road, I think, it was a field, hayfield, that's what it was, it was called the hayfield.
I think the story really extension.
It was a fucking hayfield.
Yeah, but, but it was no less, that's why our house was a poor hayfield. Uh, so it's this house here, I can't obviously give you the back view, because it's
The real.
Not knowing your road, but I can show you.
No, it's. Single store.
Oh, it can have quite different levels in the back, no? If they have spaces, yeah.
It's really true.
Yeah, no problem, Sharon, move it.
There is an objection, there is an objection from the neighbour.
Is it? Is it?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Go on.
Always set five bricks for the book.
Oh.
Five bricks for the.
We.
It's.
Because it's not a, uh, because it's not going to be a conservatory, it's going to be a brick build, they now won't have own or in sunlight into the rear of.
So does he make it on his curtains, I put in a conservatory, my goodness.
Changing the structure from the last ring, a loud, a loud letter, and the rear of, and, uh.
And we also talk about shared access road, but that's not a planning issue, it's a civil matter, so.
No, civil. No problem, move it.
I can't see a problem with it.
The poor guy's made, made an objection, and you're all.
Nobody.
Well, this is, this is.
Well, who's more than is it, Brian? I think they should call it, call it to sites, if it's a problem.
We should, we should say so.
So, doesn't, isn't, is it light of finding issue?
Call it in. Two.
No, no, right, no, no.
It's light of finding issue, no, it's no right to light, right, right to principle being overlooked, but not actually right to natural light.
To that one, it's all.
Karen?
No.
There, there, there can be on secondary light, but not on ordinary light. In other words, if you, uh, had light coming in on a side, that light depended on light in a staircase
Is that five bricks?
I guess if you, uh.
within an adjoining room, and that was the only ones that happened on secondary.
There is, there is a slight difference here from there.
So you would probably do it on that, a lot of cases on that, you spoke of.
Set back, that one, so it's a bit further in that way, but.
It's supposed to be like that, because if.
No, I'm sure.
It's more like a charity, or in a.
It's a.
Yeah.
No objection.
I think these are given, I've got some, so I've seconded by Michael, two in favour.
Yeah. Yeah.
You have, you have two, four, five, six in favour, against. I've said.
I'm going to explain on that one, because I think the local resident will probably throw that bird down the. Right, I've got about seven objections for the, for the extension, well, for houses which have been going on, actually. It's a nightmare, I'm not sure, it's okay, I'm not, it's okay.
They're all going up, it's just like.
Next one, next one.
Easy.
Fourteen four, fourteen eight.
Hundred forty five.
P twenty, zero, zero, three, four, eight, E R, erection, single storey side and rear extension for additional living accommodation at thirty four. It is the absolute, so we're planning on it, there. This house here.
Mm-hmm. Is it?
That way, so another road is this one here.
Can you go back to your, okay, do you, Sharon?
One, it's that one there.
Yeah. It's a wraparound, isn't it?
So, that's the existing elevation, so that's what's there at the moment. So, that's what's there at the moment, and that's what they're proposing.
A wraparound, no problem.
Can't see a problem with that.
Move it.
A proposal?
Yeah.
Take care.
And Michael, I think, again.
Uh, vote. Actually, it's nice to see people with a matter of hate, isn't it, I mean, with, um, any other signing problem.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Any, any neighbours comments?
No, I don't think so. No, nothing.
Okay.
Unanimous, right?
Right.
There you go.
A lot of them, they've stayed in there for Christmas, then.
No, they've just all suddenly flooded in over the past few days.
Oh, goodness me.
All these people with their New Year's resolutions, I guess, to do a bit of housekeeping.
Everybody couldn't be bothered to do one before Christmas and got rid of them in the sack period between Christmas and New Year.
Was warm weather start to come up there, and it's springing nuts, though.
On that magic pressing note.
It's so difficult to do it things in.
Right, next one, uh, E twenty, zero, zero, eight, five, eight, F. Erection, single storey rear extension to perform additional living accommodation at thirty two hard and close. So, it is. This house here.
Another big one. Well, next one, it's huge, isn't it?
Mm, and that's that one there.
Sharon, should this one have come to Stoke Giver? Didn't want to work.
There you go.
No, this is the total brandy store, yeah, yeah.
Mark, what town?
It's in my, it's in my online inbox, and I had notification come through from an email, so.
They're, they're in my work, anyway.
I just go with what.
Is there any comment on there about the fuel line?
Just a line up.
Yeah, for years, they've turned people down with applications, they've, because they've come from a fuel line, it's underneath.
Efficient.
All of a sudden, they're now getting more and more applications to come in, because the fuel line, parts of it, is redundant. But, in order to build, they've got to remove their section of the fuel line, at their own expense.
Didn't it provide fuel to fill an airfield at times of war, yeah?
Yeah, no, it goes up to ready, departure.
But it was in our area, it was in case the field was used in time of war.
Yeah. That, that verge that you saw just then on the photo, I think you'll find the fuel line runs under there, but you're not allowed to build in so many meters of the fuel line.
Yeah, it runs.
They're not, they're on it, there you are.
It runs just outside our boundary.
That's right.
But there is, there is al- already something there, you look. So, if we go to the.
A single story.
So that's what's there at the moment.
Yeah.
And that's what they want to put in, so we just want to.
Extend it further along.
So they're, so they're wanting to extend what's already there.
Yeah.
And it would be foundations going down just to that depth, but if they wanted to put double up, they'd have to go down deeper, and that would probably be in detriment of the fuel line.
I have a thought, whether any application of the fuel line.
Where is the fuel line? The fuel line goes everywhere.
I thought any application of that was good.
It's right way through this estate. It's normally underneath the, yeah.
It's normally underneath the, um, the road.
But doesn't. That's what I was thinking, because there's a huge grass standoff between the road and the boundary line and then the properties.
Yeah. When the M S Centre, uh, applied to have, do you remember it, Brian, I think you came on the site, they wanted to put an access out onto Brandyford Way.
Absolutely.
And it was not allowed because the fuel line is immediately out there on that verge.
The helicopter signs are there, aren't people following it?
Yeah, and they had to come in from, uh, what's the name of the road?
We filled it, we built.
It would upset the store, it would upset all the residents.
The, yeah, but excuse the game, was the fact that it wasn't fuel line?
But it is.
It was, it was the actual, uh.
Cables, wires.
It was the cables.
Yeah, but it's the fuel line.
Yeah.
It's right there.
Where is it?
The whole of that verge.
Yeah, move on. So, uh, can we have an objection to that one?
No, I would pass it.
Okay.
It's already there.
No objection.
I second it, yeah.
If you'd like, please.
Well, those in favour then.
Are, uh, but just.
You may have a comment, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They're kind of, but, yeah.
And that's really sound registered.
Sorry, can you just take a vote, go.
I've never noticed.
You may have a comment.
Was it unanimous, thank you.
Hmm. I've never noticed, though.
Yeah, because we've gone back to the lines.
Okay, right, next.
Uh, erection of winter house, that Christmas way.
You can see where it can fly yet.
Yeah.
No, it's sacked on by, erection of front porch.
Yeah, erection of front porch, thirty thousand one.
I'm just trying to be long, but.
Trying to miss a few out.
We get a bit tricky here from Fisher German that comes to the right side. Yeah, Fisher, yeah.
Yeah. Sacked away.
Confirm.
So this has been resubmissioned, so you can explain to us what that is?
No, this is an erection of front porch, thirty thousand one.
Yeah, so I'm like, this is what I see there.
Keep up, German.
Not trying to be long, but.
Okay, so this is erection of front porch, so it is this house here.
Yeah.
Oh, that.
Yeah.
And I can show you what. So is that house there?
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I can base.
Okay.
The leather sheet is there.
I'm fine.
I second that, yeah.
What's all part of that?
It's, it's, it's a thing there, so they'll just sort of build, sort of like, right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Possibly curt canopy, the story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's Elaine and Tom seconded.
Okay, we'll go on that, we can see the actual, uh, design, but.
Yeah.
I can show you the design if you like.
Well, you can.
It's so fuzzy.
No, we need to, you see it.
It's literally that.
It looks like a doctor in tiredness, but.
I didn't know that before.
Resubmission, when is it a resubmission?
It isn't.
How's the next one?
This is Brian proposing everybody, a steel only erection of front porch.
Oh, sorry. All right, was he talking to move on?
Yeah.
Item ten is a restart.
Right, was, was that unanimous?
Unanmar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure to keep the weight ring on that one.
All right.
Um. Waiting, permission to the insurance tree direction of two storey rear extension to provide additional living accommodation, and it's a resubmission fee retained, so you can explain this, excuse me.
Right, yes, this was, right, so this came in originally at the end of the year, and the town council had no objection to the planning of, uh, application.
So, so you've one step further.
Then what? Then what?
Then it got refused by Southgoss.
It's got to be joking.
Because the extension proposed, it approved, would not respect or enhance the character of the host dwelling and its context, the design form, type, massing, detailing and materials of the development proposed.
Really?
So.
I was talking about planners, he can't, he can't say.
What about them?
Objection design.
Concertina down a bit, okay, so.
Six, four, list of buildings, just.
So. So, so we didn't have a problem, or perhaps we didn't have a problem with what it was, what it looked like before.
I don't think there is.
So it is this one here.
It's big. It's all going down in Saxon Way, isn't it?
He's taking that down, wouldn't he?
Yeah, that's exactly what we did, so we, so.
Yeah, cool, yeah.
That's what there.
Has this been altered from the previous?
Yes, I would have explained that and said that, because I loaded up, so this was, um, what was proposed.
All right.
No, that was what was there, in combined existing. That, sorry, that is what's there at the moment. And. This is what is proposed.
They're taking out the conservatory.
So.
But how does that differ from what Southgoss turned down?
If you look at that, that's what we wanted to put in.
Mm.
And Southgoss didn't like the look of that tour.
Mm.
But, because that was very weird, and it was the flagging and stuff and things like.
Conservation.
Right, can you approve that?
Yeah.
That's me personally, yeah.
Very, very good, I think.
So that was what got refused by Southgoss, because they've now gone away, which it's more in keeping with what's there, yeah.
Yeah.
We see a new problem, that's weird. Okay, I'm sure I shared that one. It's okay.
Uh, from that, what?
Brian, not Franklin, is it?
Franklin, is it? No, 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 it's not Franklin.
That's what was commented on it on the twenty sixth of September.
That's a wire.
It's got Franklin's house.
No, always the, the monitenders.
It may not have been me there.
I could tell you who was at the meeting if you like.
You can, yeah. Oh, we share that.
No, we're second, whilst I have a quick look.
I'm sure it's been, actually, yeah.
Uh, Brian wasn't there.
There you are, see, I did share it, I rest my case.
Yes. Uh, Elaine, no, Michael proposed it. Elaine seconded it, there were six in favour and one against for local.
Was I there?
Was I there? Was I there?
See.
Were you there? Uh, yes, Keith, you were there.
So you chaired it?
That was by, uh, Tony chaired it.
I remember that one, no.
Was I there? No, I wasn't, was I?
Yes, you were there.
Was I?
Yes.
We're there, so.
Yeah.
We're up to our necks, anyway, you know what?
We can feedback to Tony and say, you know, they were.
Sharon, Sharon, please, I propose accepting it, carry on.
Right, move it.
Yeah, I agree, right, I'm on a second, so that is, Tom proposed no objection.
Cherry seconded. And who got that piece?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favour? Oh, no, I'm on the wrong one now, what am I doing?
Um, you want sausage stock?
I know that was, that was that one, wasn't it, I'm on the next, I put them up in the normal order, so I said, so it was certainly in favour.
Mm.
And against. Extension. You?
We can have us a name photo, please, we can all go back and feedback crystal.
Oh, no, next one, please, crystal way.
Yeah, next one, please.
So it's your fault. Some. Right, erection of a summer house, fifteen crystal way, sorry, that's, um, Sharon, pick up, um.
Okay, erection of front porch, that was actually. I've got these two in the wrong order, but I'm just going to write myself notes so I remember.
No objection to that, one, one.
Yeah, that was unanimous, and this one's, that's fine, marvelous. Right, okay, next one is erection of summer house at fifteen Crystal Way. Mm. Okay, here is this one here, the very long garden.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can we see the plan, isn't it?
Can we see the plan?
Well, yeah, you can see the s- the plan, but that's as much as the plan is. There.
No problem.
Well, I've got this summer house at the end of their garden.
Oh, yeah, go with that, yeah.
No problem.
Carry on, yeah, seconded. That's fine.
Elaine.
Okay, who got that piece?
You don't miss.
What are you going to use the extension for?
Summer house.
For the summers, eh?
So we'll be summer with all the.
I mean, I've got a ground water pool somewhere.
Come on, next one, please.
Right.
Right, the next one is P twenty zero zero four one nine F, change of use of unit two from business B one to coffee shop at unit two Great Park Road.
That's amended. Was that when we turned down?
No, that's, it always says that.
Planning, quarter's amended.
Used as classes orders nineteen eighty seven has amended, that's a statute.
Statute for avoiding.
Well, order it.
What's B one?
So it is this one here.
Mm.
Business two.
Yeah, what's B one?
B one minster.
I've seen that power, that category.
No, I know that, but what does it equal?
Drink the bastard.
Because it said a class, a coffee shop is class A three, what's a business B one?
Offices.
Mm.
Is it? Officer.
So it's this one here.
This is shared either way.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, fine.
That's fine, that's not very different from the outside, if I can show you.
I propose that.
No, it's probably going to help all the offices.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, I show you.
I agree.
I accept, accepted, yes, yes.
So that's what's.
Yeah, not going to force objections from local residents.
No.
No, carry on, seconded.
Coffee shop. Yeah.
Or please.
We have a bit on that piece?
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, all was unanimous so far? Unanimous.
Sorry, who, so I know it was unanimous, who proposed and who's.
I proposed, Tom seconded.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, reconsultation.
I mean, it's.
There's a ton of offices, names on it.
Yeah.
They're all new.
Couple of new ones.
Got long, massive of new ones.
Yeah.
That's it. Right, okay, so this one is a reconsultation, so it is installation of one front and one rear roof light at seventy one, that's standing short, close. So. Uh, you didn't have any objection to the original application, so. Here. So there are pictures, because I've got the pictures from the previous. One.
Roof light.
Yeah, it is literally roof lights.
Is it, Tom?
Okay, this is, it's, it's.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
One in the corner there.
Fix, fixed glass anywhere.
On the rear. It's just in the corner there. That house there.
Mm-hmm.
Is it normal?
Yeah. It goes like that.
No.
You can see on his side.
They're basically turning an attic a bit, more to get natural light to it.
Yeah.
Fix.
Yeah.
But, but, but one thing is, has they got that rule for that?
Right.
Converting that to.
Yeah, building rates, I mean, do we get involved in building rates?
Fix.
Fix, well, that's a problem, not a fix.
Yeah, that's my question, do we get involved in that?
Right, okay, so I will show you.
It's the Southgoss that should make sure that it's in accordance with what is permitted.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a local neighbourhood thing of our opinion, our comments.
That's all, this is the Arab people, I don't have any holding in that.
So.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
That was what was proposed.
Mm.
And this is what was. So that was what we didn't have a problem with.
Mm.
And that's what's proposed now.
So different.
So instead of, yeah, instead of one window there, they got two, little ones.
Oh, it's fine. That's fine.
I was going to say with the library, I was like.
Second.
That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, uh, I'd more, uh, Keith seconded, and, um, and we're going to move on.
E fifteen.
I have the, no.
That's going to make it better, isn't it?
No.
It's a little better.
For a will for a women of all.
That's why I've carried on.
Have you, have you had better looking, you're right.
It was mainly for the young and this.
They're like, these kind of things.
If there was a problem, then it would work from there.
Right, you know, we.
Carry on.
Well, we just did.
It's a dorm.
So why, why, it's like, it's like extensions, and it's probably done, I do a simulation tour.
If you really want, you can get some scaffolding.
Well, yesterday it's that it's just ongoing, we've worked due to commence. Right, it's actually going to be shut in March. Obviously, but when all this new hard on the bedroom service. Come out, because of the traffic issues.
The drop in ones tonight.
Yeah, here's the guy.
Another one.
There's one of those four, yeah.
If you didn't go.
You've been to two places at once. You have any hope to go today, so.
I think I'm the last one.
Yeah, what's the next one?
Right, S C C, proposed, that we'd seen, didn't want to do a wall consultation.
Right, this is, yeah, it's another one, which has come in. We've got it in the agenda pack. So it is the one which is by the shows at Wedwood Road. Your objection for the removal of the one from the testo's pear tree was that you objected to the removal of that one on the basis of high return employment usage in the area as one's domestic need. For clarification, domestic need refers to a situation where individuals need to access a telephone for social reasons, i.e. domestic violence, a need to use a phone to reach out without other people knowing, council still that the safety of the town's residents would be diminished compromised by the loss of this phone box, and that was the one for pear tree.
I propose we use the same logic and rationale for that.
That's why I didn't keep running.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you could have adopted, you could have adopted.
I, I propose the same wording, yeah, right, good point, that's fine.
Well, there's all sorts of things, phone box.
Band they said it.
Band proposed.
Especially if it has been turned into a toilet. So you don't want to get risked, you need to not keep it for posterity for people to use in the community.
Yeah.
Well, it's gone.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
A phone box.
A phone box.
Ask it, that's what we're going to use it for.
A phone box.
Well, it is.
We don't want it to be removed as a phone box.
And if they want to remove it.
I mean, that's in fact, last year, they used that justification to not remove it.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay.
So can you say a vote on that?
Yeah, I think it'll be unanimous.
Unanimous, unanimous.
But. Uh, to deal with matters relating to.
It's very blocking.
But.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
The people that are present for peanuts.
You got it.
I'll second that.
The band proposed Elaine seconded.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Please note, February's planning meeting is actually the fourth of March. There are two of them.
I think it was May the fourth, which is actually March fourth, so.
Is it?
It was May fourth, which would be.
No. First time.